Got it? I will now accept a motion to go back into open session.
I move the council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Robertson. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Councilor Claffey has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so we are now back into an open meeting for the work session. We will adjourn this meeting and meet back at 7:30 for the Stanton City Council regular meeting.
I've got all this stuff to move.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the December 8th, 2022 Stanton City Council regular meeting to order. And our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to do so, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, to the public and religious citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the invocation, moment of silence, and this evening it's Councilor Darby's turn.
Good evening. This evening, since it's my turn for the invocation, I have asked my friend and Reverend John Kraft of Bethany Presbyterian Church to present a Christian invocation. So if you'd like to join us, please feel free to do so.
If you care to, please join me in prayer. Gracious God, through this season of waiting and expectancy, we ask each of us to reflect on the fact that we need to work together in the waiting. Regardless of our beliefs and celebrations, let us lead with grace, hope, and love. While the world may seek to divide us at times, let us draw close in this community and seek unity, and may we listen to understand and not to respond. For when we empathize with our neighbor, it is easier to seek their welfare and love them. We thank you for the dedicated service for those that are going off this council, for the new ones that are willing to lend their gifts and coming on. And throughout this community, I ask you to bless each and every person as we seek to care for one another. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Great. Next is the mayor's report, and I have a few things to go over. I had the pleasure of riding the Santa Express with the Virginia Scenic Railway. That was a lot of fun. If you have the opportunity to do so, I highly recommend it. It will certainly put you in the holiday spirit. Also, I had the honor of attending the Shelburne-Woodwin Ensemble. It was held in the city council chambers earlier today, and wow, the kids at Shelburne are just phenomenal. They have so much talent. Again, it helped to put me in the holiday spirit, and if that didn't do it, this certainly should. This Saturday, I will be playing an elf at the Gypsy Hill Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So if you would like to drive through the park, I'm happy to give you a candy cane. Also, I'm playing an elf the following Saturday in the downtown area from, let's see, all right, Morgan gave this to me. Where are you, Morgan? Oh, there you are, okay. December 10th, Santa's Cottage located in the Gingerbread Gardens at the Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library. Fun activities, music, and then photo opportunities. Photo opportunities with Santa, I'm assuming. All right, and that's 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., all right. And then on December 17th, Santa's Downtown Workshop will be set up inside the space. Stop by, take a look inside, and capture a selfie with Santa, Mrs. Claus, and friends, which, when you say friends, you mean the elves, so. It sounds like a lot of fun, a lot of holiday fun here in Stanton. I had the opportunity to decorate Christmas cookies with the Mary Baldwin students. That was a lot of fun. I think I ate more than I decorated, so anyway. I also had the opportunity to attend the Augusta Health update on their community outreach. Councilor Carolyn Dole was also in attendance. They are doing a lot of really good things in our region. And I wanted to take an opportunity to thank the Celebration of Holiday Lights. They provided Christmas cupcakes and Christmas candy for the city council members, so that was very, very sweet of them to do that. And if you haven't been through the park, again, highly recommend it. A lot of holiday cheers taking place here in the city of Stanton. And with that, I would like to take a moment to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable, happy holidays. And that takes us on to the next item, which is additional items by members of council. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Arabs.
Councilor Holmes?
Well, this is my last meeting, and I've done more of this chair out, so somebody else have to get a new chair, but I just want to thank everybody in the city that I've had the pleasure of working with, and they make me look good, you know, and I just really appreciate the fact that, you know, I've been able to serve here for eight years, eight and a half years, really, but it's just been a joy, and I mean, some days it ain't a joy, but it's, but overall, it's been, it's been an experience, and I just hope that the next people who take our places will, will have a good experience also. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody, especially all the people in the city who bust their butts every day for, to make things work.
Thank you. Now, Terry, didn't you say you wanted to take Baldwin Jennings' place?
Yeah. I'm already feeling pretty grumpy, so I can probably handle it.
All right. Are there? This is Brenda Mead. Councilor Mead?
Yeah, I'd like also to say that it's been my honor and privilege to serve the people of Stanton in the four and a half years that I've been on city council. And especially to thank the folks who have taken the time and trouble to show up in city council meetings. I want to appreciate all of you for your presence. I also want to appreciate all of the citizens who have taken time to send their emails and their thoughts to members of city council to make sure that you are heard by the members of city council. I want to thank the folks for attending city council meetings online as well, and I'm so pleased that you have that privilege. There was a time when I was concerned that it was going to be taken away, so I appreciate that very much. I also want to say that as a special gift to each of the current city council members and the new city council members, I presented a reset button with a specially recorded message, and I do hope that when the time is appropriate, that you have that button with you, and that when you realize that a reset is needed, that you can, you can press that button and share a little humor with your fellow city council members. And I think it's important that, that we understand that power is about sharing power. Power is about counting past four and recognizing that all voices should be heard and, and that their thoughts should be given respect. So that's what I have to say with that, with respect to that. I also want to say that, that this year's celebration of lights, of holiday lights at Gypsy Hill Park is probably the best I've seen in the 10 or 12 years I've lived in, in the city of Stanton, and I want to, I want to recognize that nearly 20 years ago, Mrs. Thelma Newman conceived and implemented Stanton's Celebration of Holiday Lights at Gypsy Hill Park. On October 12th, we received a request from her friend of 70 years, Mrs. Moonine Jackson, Amos, to formally recognize Mrs. Newman for her wonderful contributions and her service to church and community. And therefore, at this time, I would like to move for the council of the city of Stanton to appropriate $1,000 for the dedication of a bench in Gypsy Hill Park to honor Thelma Newman, contingent upon the community raising and contributing $1,500 towards the remainder of the bench's cost. I think the people of Stanton would feel privileged to be able to support that kind of honor for Mrs. Newman. So I make that motion.
This is Carolyn Dole. I'll, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any further discussion? I would like to read a letter from Mrs. Thelma Newman. Dear Stanton City Council, effective immediately, my name is not to be used on any and all emails referring to the issue of recognition for me. You know who you are. If this continues, I may be forced to take legal action. I will not be used as a pawn for anyone. Where is God in this? How does He feel? During this holiday season, it is difficult enough for me and my immediate family, son, daughter, and grandson. Where were you when my husband and son passed away 13 days apart? I pray God forgives you for all that, who was a party to this inconsiderate behavior. I will keep each one of you in my prayers. Blessings to all. Thelma A. Newman. Because of the fact that Mrs. Newman has made it very clear to me, as well as in this letter, that she would not like to be recognized at this time, I will not be supporting this measure, and Mr. Kessinger, I will ask that you make a copy of this letter and make sure all council members receive a copy.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kessinger, call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Oh.
Mayor Oaks?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Any additional items from other council members?
Yes, this is Carolyn Dole. If, if Ms. Mead is done, are you finished? Well, we said give her a round of applause like we did Terry. So, I'm wearing appropriate headgear for tonight because this is a bipartisan statement. Let's make lying wrong again. You know, I was going to, I was gonna say that I'm, I'm prejudiced. I was gonna say that. I'm prejudiced against donkeys, specifically smart asses, dumb asses, lazy asses, and lying asses. So if anybody ever had a problem with me, you're in one of those categories. But no, I decided not to do that. Instead, I want to give a little advice at my last meeting on a few items, like with nominations for our various boards and commissions, please make sure that the people who are appointed are the most qualified, not just the friends of somebody, or the cousin, or the, the person from the right political party. It's important. Some of these boards and commissions require a lot of expertise, so I hope that the public and the new council members as well will be watchful of this. Secondly, recycling. We can have curbside recycling. People on a weekly basis are so dissatisfied with the, the current situation, they're paying product providers and they're paying the city. I hope that the city, the citizens of the city will, will rally and say, we want what we're paying for. And that doesn't mean it has to be every week. You know, if you want to save money, run it every other week. So, so please, don't give up on curbside recycling. Then on the West End, I just need to mention that I requested sidewalk to be continued from Marshmallow Road up to connecting with the food line, and I did that when Steve Owen was city manager, and it didn't get done. And I found money, the HUD money, to, to fund this sidewalk, and it's still not done. I don't know if city staff don't like the West End, but don't let them go on past this. This was approved in their funding, and, and we should have had that sidewalk already. And that is a consistent source of revenue for the city to put sidewalks into lower-income areas that have never had any, and I encourage you to continue that effort. Then finally, don't mess up our historic districts because we get a lot of revenue from tourism, and it's a fatal, fatal stupid mistake to let that get messed up to where they're not historic anymore. Finally, I would like to thank everyone who has been so supportive. In my 16 and one-half years, it only seems like 100, but it's been my honor and privilege to serve the city. When I ran the first time, I had no agenda other than I was willing to do it if people wanted me to do it, and so they voted for me, and so I did the job. I didn't have any personal vendettas. I didn't have any partisan things I wanted to do on council. I just wanted to be helpful, and so it's, it's been my honor and privilege, and I want to thank all the citizens of Stanton for their support for all these years.
Thank you, Carolyn.
All right, anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session in regular meaning minutes of November 10th, 2022.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
I move that we approve the minutes of the work session in regular meeting on November 10th, 2022, as presented.
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Holmes?
I second that.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks, as I was not present on November the 10th, I will be abstaining from this thing.
That's Councilor Darby will be abstaining. All right, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the regular meeting. Item A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Grand Home Furnishings to rezone 550 Richmond Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to B-2 General Business District. Ms. Bea Regard?
Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner, will handle this item this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Grand Home Furnishings has requested to rezone property at 550 Richmond Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial District to B-2 General Business District in order to use the existing building for retail sales. The building was used as a warehouse space for the area Grand Home Furnishing Stores until that was discontinued when Grand Home Furnishings consolidated their stores in Waynesville some time ago. They would now like to open an outlet store at this location, and since it's owned industrial, commercial use is not permitted, retail sales are not permitted at this location, therefore they have applied for the rezoning. Staff has reviewed the request and has no issues with the proposed rezoning. The proposed rezoning would help establish a new use for underutilized property. It's my understanding that this property, since Grand Home Furnishings has moved out, has just been used for storage for various businesses in the city. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designates this area as commercial, and obviously, the proposed rezoning conforms with this designation. The surrounding zoning on the same side of Richmond Avenue is zone light industrial, while everything on the other side of Richmond Avenue is zone B-2 general business. Staff recommends that the entire south area of this section of Richmond Avenue be considered for a potential rezoning in the future to B-2 general business. That may be something we undertake after our next comprehensive plan update. At its November 17th, 2022 meeting, the planning commission conducted a public hearing. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request, and on a 5-0 vote, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the rezoning. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
All right, are there any questions?
I've got one.
All right, Councilor Holmes?
Are they gonna build onto the building they have or just utilize the building they have?
They would just utilize the existing building. So it wouldn't be a whole lot of changes to the site, other than they would be required to strip some parking spaces, but they have lots of pavement in order to do that.
Right, did we have anyone here that wanted to speak on behalf of Grand Home Furnishings? Okay, you can come on up. Thank you, Rodney.
My name is Robert Jennings. I'm senior vice president for the company. We've looked at this property for a number of years, possibly potentially converting it to a retail area. We'd like to open up a retail outlet in that location. We have plans and working with a architect to redesign the building slightly to accommodate ADA. There'll be bathroom improvements. We're planning on painting the outside of the building, installing new signs, and make other general improvements. The interior of the building will virtually remain the same. No, no major changes other than improvements in bathrooms and lighting, so.
Are there any questions by council members? All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. So we are going to have a public hearing on this matter, which means I need to read the guidelines for the public hearing. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during this council's meetings, other public hearings, and matters from the public. And please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing, so if you wish to speak, please approach the podium, and we will alternate between the individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. So I'll bang the gavel, and if you would like to speak from the audience, just come to the podium, and again, we'll alternate between folks that are here in person and folks that have their hands raised via Zoom. State your name, you have five minutes to speak, and if you can, let us know where you're from. And when I bang the gavel a second time, that'll close the public hearing out. So with that, the public hearing is now open. If anyone would care to approach the podium to address this issue. Welcome back. We missed you, Mr. Fosse.
Yeah, I'm sure. I don't have my hat on, so I have all my hair, and I can hear everything that is being said, and I usually have integrity. I know the difference between what's right and what's wrong, and I will do the right thing. I think that if this proposal benefits Stanton, the city of Stanton, it benefits the citizens of Stanton, that it should be approved, okay, without any question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kessinger, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else from the audience care to address the council concerning this matter? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks?
Councilor Holmes?
I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
No, Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councilor Claffey is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on to item B, which is also a public hearing. Public hearing in consideration of a request by, and let's see if my German is, is good here, Schnitzel Hoffer Real Estate LLC for a special use permit at 909 Greenville Avenue. How bad did I mutilate that, Rodney?
I'm starting to question my pronunciation of it, and I'm not going to try it too at this time, but as the mayor noted, that this is a request for a special use permit at 909 Greenville Avenue, and it's to reestablish a residential use of an existing single-family dwelling. There are two structures on this property, one that has been used for commercial purposes on the front part, that's access directly off of Greenville Avenue, and then this residential single-family dwelling that is accessed from an alleyway off of Moore Street. The property is owned B-2 general business district, and residential use on the ground and basement levels is only permitted by special use permits. I've been informed that back in the day, for, for a very long time, there was a very popular diner at the front of this property. Unfortunately, it closed before I moved to the city of Stanton, and sadly, and it's my understanding that the owner, the proprietor of this establishment lived in this structure immediately behind his diner. Sadly, he passed away in 2013, and according to city records, it has been vacant since that time. And as I'm sure council has heard me say on many occasions, that once a legal, nonconforming use ceases to exist for a period exceeding two years, it loses its legal, nonconforming status, and therefore can only be utilized for what's permitted in the underlying zoning district, which is business. But now the current owner would like to reestablish it for residential uses, and staff has reviewed this and has not identified any concerns. The comprehensive plan, future land use- The comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates this as commercial. However, this structure was clearly built to be a single-family dwelling. It's accessed from an alley through a residential neighborhood. Due to topography and this limited access, it is much more conducive for residential purposes. And I would note that the comprehensive plan certainly supports increasing the housing stock. I know this is only one house, but it is something that hasn't been utilized as a house for approximately nine years. And I would say it's a rather modest house, and we certainly would have people that would be interested in renting that, I'm sure. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on November 17th, 2022. No one spoke in opposition to the request. On a five to zero vote, the commission recommended approval of special use permit with the following condition, that the structure shall only be used as a single-family dwelling, and no additional dwelling units are permitted. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Are there any questions?
Just have one. Is this including the little, the restaurant part in front that's on the, the house behind it?
This would just be for that, the house behind it.
Yeah, okay.
When the previous owner of Harry's Diner passed away, I think his macaroni and cheese recipe went with him. You missed out, Mr. Rhodes. Anyone out there that remembers Harry's. It was some good macaroni and cheese. All right. Are there any additional questions? Okay, just like before, this will be a public hearing. I'll hit the gavel, and if you would like to make any comments, feel free to come to the podium, and we'll alternate between the audience that's in person and the folks through Zoom. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Okay. Mr. Kessiker, do we have anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Come on up, Mr. Fossa.
I would note that the owner, Mr. Schnitzhofer, contacted staff earlier this week and said he would not be able to attend.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Alvin Oalbert Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street, Stanton. Whatever is best, and sometimes the council has to make that decision. And the decision of the council should be unanimous. If it's not unanimous, then it should go back to a work session. We have to remember that there are four members on this council who have really control over the council. And they should remember that the same people who voted for them also voted for the other people who are on this council. And there should be very few, if any, four or three votes. So it should be unanimous, whatever you vote for. Okay? And personally, I think no buildings should be left empty or vacant in the city. There used to be quite a number, large number, of realtors in this city, real estate. I think it should increase again rather than decrease. So I think, personally, I think you should approve it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kessiker, anyone with their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Anyone else from the audience? All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
I move that council adopt the resolution and approve the special use permit with the condition as recommended by the planning commission.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second that.
All right. Councilor Holmes is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessiker, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, unanimous. All right, that takes us on to item C, update from Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. Ms. Beauregard.
Sure, I'll do a quick introduction. On February 24th of this past year, city council adopted a resolution to establish an Equity and Diversity Commission, which is now known as the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. They were appointed on May 26th and have been meeting regularly since June. The adopted resolution states that no later than December 2022, which is now, the commission will provide an update on their work to city council. I have both tonight here, I have the DEI Commission Chair Sabrina Burris and the Vice Chair Lindsay Lennon, who will present the update, and there is no action required tonight. This is simply an update of their work so far.
Thank you and welcome.
And they're actually going to sit at the tables in the front.
I was going to say, feel free.
Kylie will bring, there we go. She's going to bring the.
D R and mousing. Right. So.
I'm sorry, this is Brenda Mead. I can't see the presentation. Has it been put on the screen, Kylie?
Yes.
Can't see it? I can see it now. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for having us here this evening. Thank you to our commission members who are here present in the audience and also those who joined us by Zoom. Leslie has already introduced us, and you all already know who we are because you appointed us. So tonight, we're just going to talk a little bit about what we have been doing over the last six months since we were appointed to this commission, and then where we hope to be going, and then give just an opportunity for you all to share maybe questions, thoughts that you all have for the work that we've accomplished, which is a lot. So just a quick summary of the commission history. These are all things that you all know. There was a motion adopted in August, September that said we want to have this commission be a part of our city work, and that was done by city council. Thank you all so much. That was followed by a grant that allowed you all at first to work with Dr. Stasia. Is she here with us this evening?
On Kylie? I don't know.
I think she was going to try and join at like eight or five.
She was going to try to join. We'll see if she's.
I don't think she's quite here yet.
Okay. So the work that was done with Dr. Stasia first was with city council, and then also it's sort of introduction to this work she led with us, and that happened in June. February resolution was adopted, and that resolution is really sort of the the game plan, if you will, the project plan for us as a commission. And then we did interviews in May, and then the 14 folks that were approved or appointed to the commission came together in June, and we did our initial orientation. So I was going to say next slide, but that's me. So the commission is, as I said, 14 folks from all across the city of Stanton, a really diverse group of individuals, and I will speak to that sort of towards the end of our presentation. Here you have listed for those in the audience and then for those on Zoom, just the names of the folks. I will not read all of those out loud. So one of the first things that we did as a commission was sort of take that resolution and figure out exactly what that resolution meant to us and the work that we wanted to accomplish as a commission. I think this was really important because we had, and again, this is a thing that I will speak to you later on in the presentation, this sort of idea of a really large mountain to climb. And so we took that resolution and broke it into a statement of purpose. So it's who, what, and how. And so the who is the community members, the list that I just showed you, the 14 folks, our city council representatives who have been incredibly helpful to us in this journey. And among us, we have the span of age, race, ethnicity, ability, skills, and insight that has proven to be incredibly important to the work. And so that's who we are. What we are is a commission of folks appointed by our city council. We have 18 months to reach a specific purpose, and that is to meet the resolution requirements and to provide then recommendations to the city for consideration and hopefully implementation to address both. So it says inequitable social and racial outcomes here, but I think we want to address both the inequitable ones and the equitable ones in that process of recommendations. And so how are we going to do this? This was the big mountain that we sort of had to figure out how we were going to climb and who was going to do what. And so what we are looking at is, one, initial data research. What data already exists in the city of Stanton relative to diversity, equity, inclusion? And then, second, what data do we then want to pull from our citizens? It will be really important for us to have the voice of citizens recognized in this process. And so when we get to the point of community listening sessions, this will be an opportunity for our city community members to be able to speak their voice and hopefully help us make some of those recommendations. And then, once we do all of this sort of data review, research, additional data, community listening sessions, public hearing, we will come back to you all in exactly a year, maybe on the same date, not quite sure, and then provide those final recommendations, which we hope will then become a strategic plan for diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of Stanton. So after we figured out what was our statement of purpose, we again looked to the resolution. I think that continues to be sort of the guiding document that guides the work that we do. And so we decided like we had to have specific deliverables. So number one is provide an update. That's what we are here to do this evening. Number two is to evaluate existing data. And Lindsay will talk a little bit about where we are in that process. So we want to know what data already exists all across the city of Stanton, across community leaders, community members, community stakeholders. We want to know what that information is. And so we're going to collect all the data, and then we're going to do some research. Our data and analysis team will do that research because some of us are really great at data and some of us are not so much great at data. And so they're going to take all of that information and pull it together, consolidate, aggregate, and figure out how to make a meaningful report from that information. And then also taking the information in the community listening sessions and consolidating that with the created, or excuse me, the current data as well. And then we will provide an initial public hearing to the city of Stanton prior to us providing recommendations for you all. And the goal of that will really be for them to know, I think, what we've done with all of the data and what we are planning to present to you all as a city council. And then our final project for this particular commission will be to complete that report. And again, as I noted, that report will be a list of recommendations that will be based on existing data, studies around diversity, equity, inclusion, the voices of our community members, and then sort of what makes the most sense to create a framework for a strategic plan that, again, we hope that the city will implement. So our timeline, so we started in July. That was when we did our orientation. That brings us to this evening where we are providing our update to you. January and March, we will continue to look into existing data and then start to plan those listening sessions so that we can create, I think, what additional data we might need to collect or what of community voices is relative to the data that we already have. April and July, we will continue to conduct the community listening sessions and then also start to aggregate the data, both that already exists and then that we collect from our community listening sessions. August and September, we'll be analyzing that data and then starting to build out the framework for our completed report that we will provide to you. October and November will be our public hearing where we'll share that information, the finalized report with the city of Stanton, and then also prepare to present to you all. And then in December, we will present that to you all. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about, and I'm going to let Leslie do this. We're going to talk, or sorry, Lindsay. We're going to talk a little bit about our subcommittees. So how do we accomplish these deliverables and keep ourselves to our timeline? We created some subcommittees to sort of help with that work, and I'm going to let Lindsay talk about that. Do you want to take this?
Yeah, so we've created three primary subcommittees. The first of these is logistics and planning, and then data and research, and then community connections. And I'm going to talk about each one of these just a little bit in turn. So with logistics and planning, their initial charge is to coordinate and organize the commission's deliverables and the efforts of the subcommittees. This subcommittee will plan and track data collection, community engagement, and the reporting that the commission is doing. Their initial tasks were to develop a system for project planning, create data buckets. This is what we're kind of formally calling them, or data categories, for organizing the information that we're gathering and to help coordinate between the subcommittees as well. So I think of it as, in some, the subcommittee's job is really to make sure they're all moving in the same direction, we're not overlapping with our work, that we know what tasks we're supposed to be on, and that we all get to where we want to go in a timely manner. So so far, let's see, this is, these are the tasks with just some updates underneath each one of them. So so far with these initial tasks, we currently have a working document that breaks our work down into phases and that we're using to track our progress on our tasks. We've also created shared drive files for us to be able to compile information and that we started to gather and help to keep that information organized. And for data organization, it's important for us to identify how we're going to begin to make sense of the mountain of information that we are collecting. So together with data and research, logistics has helped to create data buckets and data categories to help understand the scope of the work we're doing. And then, so we have those buckets laid out, and we, as we're bringing in data, we're starting to figure out where exactly they need to go in the different categories. And so finally, logistics and planning has been coordinating with the other subcommittees to help keep track of all the deliverables in our timelines. And yeah, and we have been doing ongoing check-ins with each of those subcommittees. Okay, on to data and research. Oh, like the fake. So this subcommittee, its initial charge is to collect and analyze the data, both from secondary sources, so sources outside of DEI, and also primary sources, which are the data, is the data that we're collecting ourselves. And this subcommittee is leading those collection efforts. They're assessing the existing data, developing collection tools, implementing these tools, and analyzing the results of the data collection. So the initial task for this subcommittee was to first come up with a survey that we could share with community partners that we've identified to gather as much information as we could from those partners to see what they could have to help us with our work. And then to, of course, to develop how we're going to keep track of that, all the data that's incoming. So those really are two initial tasks with data and research. So again, tasks and then updates below those. So so far, we've sent out a survey to 39 identified community partners. Questions on the survey relate to resources these partners see as helpful for us, the data they use, where that data comes from, and other kinds of data they see that might be helpful for us, that they could help actually provide for us. And then, of course, any recommendations they have for the work that we are doing. And we admittedly, we have a low response rate for that survey so far, but we have a process for following up with that that I'll touch on in a minute as well. Let's see. So we also have been working on a list of data that the commission will use. This list of data's resources is based off the survey we've collected so far, along with two meetings we've had with community partners and stakeholders. I'll also talk about those in just a moment. And finally, as of last week, we began in-depth interviews with several state and city departments. And the questions we're asking on those are really similar to the survey questions, and the biggest difference is that those are in person, and we're hoping that they'll, we'll be able to collect a little bit more detailed information with those. And the lists you see here are just some of the examples of the apartments that we're hoping to talk to. Our last subcommittee is Community Connections, and their charge is to connect, engage, and build relationship with community members and partners. And they're also leading the charge in planning our community engagement events. And so that was really the core of their initial task, was to get together and help create a list of the community partners and then to develop a plan for how we're going to begin that engagement work and then also help to plan some of the listening sessions. then also help to plan some of the listening sessions. So the first of these, actually, we ended up having our very first community engagement event with a community partner in July. So we had the, let's see, so so far, we had three events. So the first of these was at this July 16th commission meeting, when we invited the Assistant City Manager Angie O'Brien from Roanoke City. We invited her in to help share what work they're doing with her Equity Empowerment Advisory Board there. And this meeting was really insightful. Angie, Ms. O'Brien, was able to discuss how they developed their mission, their vision, how they created priorities, the way they use subcommittees, how they engage with their community, and and a lot of work with how they help make recommendations to city councils. So those was a really, really beneficial meeting for us in our work going forward. Our second community event was our meet and greet on September 14th. I know a few of you all were there as well. We had a number of other community partners and community members that came to that. That was really just an opportunity for us to share essentially the first half of our presentation here with the community to tell them the work that we're doing.
Great picture.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And we are really, really happy with this event and with the turnout. We're very excited about that. And then the last really set of community events that we did, we had meetings with community stakeholders on October 12th and October 26th, where we invited a select group or select few community partners in to ask them some pre-planned questions on the data that they might be able to share, some of their advice and input and recommendations for us as well. So I'm going to take just a minute here to share some of our key takeaways from these two sessions we had, because they were really beneficial. We came away with far more insights and questions at the end than we had in the beginning. So was, we knew it was a good process. First, I'll talk about these three. First, connections between the organizations. We realized there's a lot of connections that these organizations have with the data that they're using, the issues that they're seeing. And we really want to spend a lot more time to figure out what these connections look like as we move forward. Also, we want to understand more about awareness, the, some of the, one of the issues that people were bringing up, or the partners were bringing up, was this kind of disconnect between awareness for knowing what services are available and actually getting to those services. And so we want to understand some more of what that is that's going on, awareness within the community and helping to make the community aware. And then language was also something that came up, just that I think this is pretty intuitive, having a sense of how the language that we use can both help or hinder this process of working to be more equitable and inclusive. And the two more takeaways from this were that they wanted action items. This was something that was really, really interesting that stood out to us, that there's a lot of talk of diversity and equity training and different programs or seminars that folks can go to, but there isn't as much like, you need to do this or implement this exact practice. And with things like even schools, like hiring, how do you advertise for a job that makes it more equitable and inclusive? So they really want some more action items for those things. And then our final point, that takeaway, not really a surprise that there's a lot of work still to be done. We still have a lot of data we want to collect, a lot of connections to make, a lot of experiences in the community that we want to understand. And we want more in-depth and detailed experiences. Hence, our push for having some more in-depth and in-person interviews as well. Okay, so my last piece for you here are the, what's next for the community connection subcommittee. So they're supporting the data collection. We are, we're phoning our friends, me being on the data committee, phoning our friends and other subcommittees to help us with gathering and coordinating that data. But then they're also helping with those follow-ups from the initial surveys. They're also helping to prepare for the listening sessions. They're working on finding locations, times, reviewing accessibility needs and interpretation of, or interpreters, if need interpreters, and transportation needs. And our big goal with with really us moving forward with those listening sessions is to ensure that people can get to the meeting, that once they get to the meetings, that they feel comfortable and they feel heard and they can participate in the process. I think that's it. Enough. I'll hold this. So back over to Sabrina.
So just two more. So I hope that this has been informative, just to understand sort of where we started, how we created our process, and how we have been working in that process. Just some final reflections that we wanted to share. The community's openness and support has been amazing. So we've had lots of folks ask lots of questions, which I think is really important for us. And it means that it, for us, that we know that they're engaged. We certainly had to work to identify the ways that we can engage our community and stay within the resolution. And so that has been definitely something that is important to us to continue to figure out. Another thing that, another key point is just that we are strong and we're committed. So we have been able to have open conversations, diverse conversations. I think the professional backgrounds of this particular commission has been incredibly important. So I was noting earlier how I just don't do data, but we have a lovely subcommittee that does that really well. And then we have folks that are really wonderful with community engagement, and then the sort of leaders, the task managers. So we are really fortunate to have this group that is particularly diverse in those ways that is helping to move us forward. And then climbing the mountain, I don't know if any of you read the initial article that was done after our very first commission meeting, but it actually notes in the article that there was a mountain to climb. And I think our first several meetings, we were all thinking, you know, how like, how do we accomplish anything? Because it does feel like a mountain. And so one of the things in the final reflection that we want to celebrate is that we have found ways to start to climb that mountain and make sense of this work in a way that that we're all excited to get to the point where we are able to provide those recommendations. And so it feels like the mountain is either getting smaller or we're climbing to the top of it. And then staying the course, again, that's sort of this piece of as we connect with community stakeholders, and we see that they're engaged and they're involved and they want to know more, one of the things that we've had to continually do is decide, is this particular community stakeholder, is this experience, is this question, is this invitation, is it related to the course that we're on? Is it going to get us to the point of this this completed list of recommendations? And so it's been good to be able to process those things and have open conversation about them and then make decisions that say like, this is what we need to do in order to stay the course. Do we have Dr. Stasia?
No.
I didn't hear from her, so I hope she's okay.
Okay. So I did want to, if she was available, provide Dr. Stasia an opportunity to just share her insights and reflections. But because she is not here, we will skip that one. And then just the last few things. So the needs of the commission, I think really for city council, but also for the community that's present in this conversation that is online listening in, is just that continued connection to community partners. So any information, any thoughts that you all have about folks that we should connect with, it's really important for us that we do have a broad range of voices and experiences and thoughts that are related to DEI and the initial or the eventual outcome and recommendations. And then, so yeah, just continue to share the work that we're doing and support the work that we're doing in the process of the commission. And then the only question that we could think of for city council was, is there anything that we are missing that you expected or any additional ideas that you have for us to consider while we're here with you?
All right. Are there any questions, my council members?
I was just thinking, I wonder if it would be beneficial to have a high school representative to serve on the commission.
That was my question. And I see Ms. McCurdy here. I was, has there been any work with the school board or the school in regards to the commission?
So we do have school board members, or at least Superintendent Dr. Smith is is part of our long list of community partners. I think as we move into the phase of community listening sessions, we're going to do a lot of work around what are the specific populations? So youth populations, black populations, Latinx populations. So making sure that we have, at least we make every attempt that we can to reach out to the diverse populations. And so I think that's a really great recommendation to make sure that we have high school, I have a high schooler, I'll make him come and be on this commission.
There we go.
Yeah.
Right. Are there any questions or comments by council members?
Have you involved any businesses as far as employers or in the study or?
So, so we haven't really started any study, but yes, in the data collection, I think our next step will be in presenting a survey to business owners and those who work in employment. I think that is definitely a really important part of the work that we need to consider. Yes, but we haven't yet.
Well, as your city council liaison, I would like to say that I've been able to see firsthand all of the work each and every commissioner has put into the DEI commission. And you all have done so much in such a little amount of time. And I know that you're going to be presenting your final report next December, but I'm kind of hoping in that final report, there will be a request to keep this commission going. So I'm putting it out there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you so much. This was an outstanding report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and your commissioners. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right, that takes us on to item D, Discussion of FY 2022, End of the Year General Fund Financial Overview and Fund Analysis. Ms. Bowery-Gard.
Jesse Moyers, our Chief Financial Officer, will lead us through this item.
Welcome.
Good evening and hello again. So the annual audit and the annual consolidated financial report were presented to you earlier this evening during the work session. I don't want to bore you by walking through every single number. I think the best practice is to point out the ones that had a material difference in FY 22. So I'm going to walk you through some of the highlights. In addition, I'll presenting an overview of the general fund balance and my recommendation for its use. All information presented this evening is for your information only at this point. An official budget amendment for the next, for the fund balance carryover will be introduced later in January at the second meeting on budget amendment number four. Overall, FY 22 was a good year, financially speaking. Revenues and expenditures for the general funds both performed favorably compared to budget. I want to start by walking you through a few of the revenue figures. If you were to jump to the bottom line and look at the grand total, you would probably be concerned that the grand total revenues were coming in about $11 million under budget. However, this figure is misleading. So I tried to back out some of the more unusual items that's causing this. There's about almost $9 million in fund balance appropriation for both open PO encumbrances and the FY 21 fund balance carryover expenditures. We also had about $4.5 million budgeted for ARPA revenue that was not recognized. That we didn't have any ARPA spending in FY 22, and therefore, we did not recognize any ARPA revenue. That will be recognized once the spending starts. And lastly, there was a budget transfer from the Health Fund to the General Fund that was not needed, and therefore, it was not done. The revenue report that I provided separates revenue by major category, and I have highlighted the lines that are the most material. Our biggest surprise was the meals tax coming in a million and a half above budget. FY 21 meals tax performed well, and I don't think any of us predicted that we would have a $1.1 million increase from '21 to '22 in actual meals revenue, especially considering there was no rate increase and we were still in the pandemic at that time.
Councilor Claffey said Long John Silver's.
I think I did it. Local sales tax outperformed budget by 822,000. Business license outperformed budget by 702,000. The transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, outperformed budget by 448,000. And property taxes were favorable compared to budget by $1.4 million in total. You'll notice that the Department of Social Services related reimbursement lines underperformed compared to budget, but these must be looked at along with the related expenditures line. The most important thing to note here is that the DSS cost to the city's general fund was favorable by $300,000 when you look at revenues and expenditures combined. Now that is a very hard one to predict, and we don't don't foresee that continuing in the future. So on the expenditure side, we need to look at the variance to budget without the budget ARPA expenses, since there were no actuals for FY 22. And we also need to back out the carryforward encumbered POs as of June 30th. That gives us a more realistic number to look at on the expense side. Salaries and benefits came in under budget, a little over $1.1 million from open position savings. As you're aware, we have struggled to fill vacancies in the city of Stanton. And I just wanted to pause and recognize that this is a significant number, and to acknowledge the city employees that had to pick up the slack from these open positions, because services still need to be completed and done. The most significant portion of that was 416,000. That was in the public works area. Next, 192,000 from the police department, and 185,000, 185,000 from Parks and Rec.
I don't know about you guys, but.
Thank you, Dor. Yes, thank you so much to our employees, because they do so much to give back to the city. So thank you. Professional services came in under budget by almost 366,000. The main drivers in this were the city attorney's office, HR, planning, and finance. The variance on the special equipment line is actually included in the FY 22 encumbrance carryforward. This leads us to the most important part, and that's our unassigned fund balance carryboard. The final number for FY 22 was 6.5 million, of which $250,000 is a contingency reserve that cannot be spent. In addition, 677,000 was introduced in budget amendment number three to restore the negative contingency and to fund the employee bonus. This leaves us with a little over 5.5 million still remaining in the FY 22 unassigned fund balance carryover. Please remember that this is just for discussion at this point. Actual appropriations of this fund balance carryforward will be introduced on a budget amendment, which is tentatively scheduled for the second meeting in January. The recommendations that we're putting forth at this time are $2,421,050 for the capital improvements fund. And that's in accordance with the CIP plan that was passed last year for '22-'26. This will restore the FY 23 CIP funding that was cut to balance the budget in FY 23, and it will fund the FY 23 and '24 plans for projects that were scheduled to be funded with '22 carryover. $1 million is being proposed to be transferred to the water fund to help support Gardner Springs Pump Station. As you know, that project came in over budget, but is very important to the water supply of the city, and we have proceeded forward with that project. 500,000 is being proposed to set aside to cover the July storm damage. If these expenditures happen to be covered with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management money, then the funds will revert back to the unassigned fund balance. 400,000 is being proposed to be transferred to the debt sinking fund to restore the FY 23 contribution to prior levels. This was another cut that was made to the FY 23 budget to balance the budget. The remaining 1.2 million would stay in the unassigned fund balance for future needs. And that concludes everything that I wanted to bring to your attention. If you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer or get you an answer.
Are there any questions or comments by council members?
All right. Thank you so much for your report. All right, that takes us on to item E, Consideration of Ordinants to Amend FY 2023 Budget Ordinants for the City of Stanton by Adding Budget Amendment Number Three. Ms. Bowery-Gard.
Ms. Moyers will also take care of this item.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you. The budget amendment number three for fiscal year 2023 was introduced at the November 10th meeting. It is a city-only budget amendment. This amendment did not require a public hearing. This evening, I am bringing it back before you for your consideration. On this amendment, we're proposing two uses for the FY 22 carryover. The remaining carryover, as I said, will come back to you in budget amendment number four in January. Budget amendment number three totals 744,407. The general fund portion is 677,135. 309 459 is to fund the negative 309,459 is to fund the negative contingency that was in the FY 23 budget, one of the items used to balance the FY 23 budget. This will erase that negative contingency and bring the contingency line to zero. The rest of the amendment relates to the employee bonus that we are proposing to give our employees in their December 16th paycheck. We're proposing a $500 regular part-time, a bonus for regular part-time workers, and $1,000 for full-time employees. Employees must have been employed with the city as of November 13th to be considered eligible. The general fund portion of this bonus is 300,390, and 67,286 will be transferred from the general fund to the following funds for their share of the bonus. 17,225 for the Blue Ridge Court Services, 1,077 for HUD, $3,230 for the parking fund, $24,761 for the water fund, $538 for the sewer fund, $18,302 for the environmental fund, and lastly, $2,153 for the storm water fund. The city manager recommends the ordinance be approved as presented.
Right, are there any questions by council members? In hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 budget by adding Budget Amendment Number Three totaling 744,421.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it.
Right, Councilor Dole has seconded. Any further discussion?
I would just like to thank the whole financial department, especially Jesse, for doing a great job.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us on to item F, A Consideration of Ordinants Authorizing Bonus Payments to City of Stanton Employees.
Mayor Oaks, I just wanted to make you aware that Miss Stacia has joined the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Would council members dare to give Dr. Stacia a chance to address the council?
Yeah, Dr. Stacia, I'm sorry you missed the presentation, and Lindsay and Sabrina have left, but would you all like to hear a few words from her?
I would.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, I had a family emergency. My brother was hospitalized, and I got the call right at 7:55.
Many prayers.
Yeah, thank you. He's doing okay, but it was, you know, anyway, he's hospitalized. I just had to handle a few family issues, so I'm so sorry that I missed. But I did want to get on to tell you just how impressed I am with the work of the commission. I'm sure that you were also impressed with how comprehensive their approach is, how thorough their planning has been, how engaged they are. They are super engaged. They are such independent-minded, focused, collaborative group that has put together such a robust plan that meets all of the criteria that you all outlined. And they've already started with introducing themselves, introducing their work to the community, and building trust in the community, and laying out a roadmap that is going to yield really great results. I'm proud to have been able to coach them through this process, and I will remain on board as a coach to them next year, although I have great confidence that they're going to do exceptionally well. But I will be there to provide additional coaching and guidance, particularly after they do all of the preliminary work, and we're looking at the data, coming up with the findings, and making recommendations. So I did want to get on and say thank you so much for your trust in them, and just to lend my support to their work.
Are there any questions or comments by city council members? Well, Dr. Stacia, I for one would like to say thank you for all of the hard work that you have put in to help move the Stanton DEI Commission forward, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and again, I apologize for disrupting the.
No apologies.
I do appreciate having a minute to show my support, and thank you so much, Mayor, and thanks all council members.
Well, thank you, but.
Luck with your family.
Yes, many prayers for your brother.
Thank you. All right, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, item F, Ms. Boe Regard.
Sure, I'll introduce this item. I also have John Ben here, Chief Human Resources Officer. Now that you have passed the budget ordinance, which included funding for an employee bonus, we now have needing ordinance to actually authorize the bonus payment. So I'll review what the bonus payments will do very quickly. It's $1,000 for full-time employees who are a part of the city's paying compensation plan, $500 for part-time employees who are a part of the city's paying compensation plan, work on a regular basis, and at a minimum are eligible for holiday pay. Employees must be on the city's payroll by November 13th, 2022. The bonus will be taxable as applicable with federal and state law. The bonus will appear in employees' paychecks on December 16th, 2022, and any constitutional officers and their employees included in the city's employment classification system pursuant to a memorandum of agreement with the city, which includes the clerk of circuit court, commissioner of revenues, sheriff and treasurer are eligible for one-time payments. And this bonus represents not only a big thank you to those who have shown a strong commitment, as Ms. Moyers was talking about earlier during her presentation, by staying with us, but also a welcome to the City of Stanton to those who have recently joined us. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Ben is also here to answer any questions.
Mr. Ben, did you have any comments?
I think this is a, something that's all employees are going to be very grateful for. The timing is impeccable, but I'm glad that we were able to do this, and Ms. Boe Regard certainly took the lead on this, so thank you all. Hopefully, you will approve this, and we can go ahead and move forward with this.
Are there any questions by council members? Any comments? Right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Darby.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and the chief financial officer to award and apply the one-time monetary payment to employees' paychecks on December 16th, 2022, as presented.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second. Ms. Terry Holmes.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Boe Regard, if you could share the good news.
I sure will. Thank you very much.
Takes us on to item G, A Consideration of Appeal of a Historic Preservation Commission Denial of a Certificate of Appropriateness for 120 Church Street Newtown Historic District Addition of Dormers at the Attic Story of the Main Block of the Residence Built 1791 through 1793. Ms. Boe Regard.
Rodney Rhodes will walk through this item.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you. This item is an appeal from a decision of the Stanton Historic Preservation Commission under Section 18.85 of the City Code. An appeal may be taken to city council to challenge a decision of the commission. City council may, in conformity with provisions of the Historic Preservation District, reverse or affirm the commission's decision in whole or in part, essentially having all the same powers of the commission. I would note that I believe the important section, portion of that statement is in conformity with the provisions of the Historic Preservation District. There are standards that the commission must review and look at when they're reviewing an application, and those are the same standards and guidelines that council should be looking at this evening. It's not a matter of whether or not you like the proposal or you dislike it, it's whether or not it meets the standards and the guidelines. I thought it'd be helpful if I quoted a couple sections of the City Code referencing the powers of the commission and what are the review standards. I have taken the liberty of making one change in this short section. Wherever it says commission, I have inserted city council, because de facto, the city council has that same authority and power as the commission on this particular case tonight. And this is in Section 18.85.050, Section Seven. City council may approve the certificate of appropriateness as proposed, approve the certificate of appropriateness with modification it deems necessary, or reject it. City council shall approve the application and issue a certificate of appropriateness if it finds that the proposed material changes in the appearance would not have a substantial adverse effect on the aesthetic, cultural, historic, or architectural significance and value of the historic property or the historic district. In making this determination, city council shall consider, in addition to other pertinent factors, the following criteria. For reconstruction, alteration, new construction, or renovation, city council shall issue certificates of appropriateness if those actions conform in design, scale, building material, setback, and landscaping, and to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and the Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. End quote. In this instance, property owner Scott Goldenberg appeals to city council the commission's October 25th action to deny certificate of appropriateness for the addition of four dormers on the single-family dwelling at 120 Church Street, which is located in the Newtown Historic District. The main house was constructed between 1791 and 1793, and a two-story wing was added in 1844. The proposed dormers would be added to the original section of the residence. As part of established review process, Frank Strassler, Director of Historic Stanton Foundation, analyzes and submits a written briefing and recommendation on all such applications to the commission. Upon consideration of the information presented by the applicant, his agent, and Historic Stanton Foundation's recommendation, the commission, on a two-to-one vote, acted to deny the requested certificate of appropriateness. I thought it'd be appropriate for Frank Strassler, the Director of Historic Stanton Foundation, to now address the commission, to go over his analysis and recommendation regarding this request, and after he concludes his comments, I would like to have Ms. DeNene Brannick, the Chair of the Stanton Historic Preservation Commission, explain the commission's decision in denying this certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Strassler.
Thank you. See if I can spill this water. Try not to. Good evening, members of council. Settle in. To prepare for this meeting, I reviewed the code language standards, guidelines, and guidelines in relation to the meeting transcript. The HPC correctly identified sections of the Stanton Historic District guidelines and came to a majority decision indicating the addition of dormers is not appropriate. Those sections focus on historic significance, identifying the character-defining elements, and the view from the primary side and rear locations. Members of the HPC interpreted the guidelines and determined the following. Number one, significance. The Stewart House is, A, a very significant, is very significant within the historic district, older than most others, is a rare example of form and style, retains a large degree of its exterior design and materials. This list references section in our guidelines, Section Two, Planning Your Project, A Introduction. Number six, consider additional items beyond the treatment terms to include a level of significance. Very significant within the historic district if it is older than most others, is a rare example of form or style, and retains a large degree of its exterior design and materials. The Stewart House, number two, the Stewart House roof is an important character-defining element viewable from a primary location, elevation, and the HPC determined the dormers will not be inconspicuous when viewed from the rear sections of the building. Section Five, Guidelines for Existing Buildings Elements Roof. One of the most important elements of the structure, the roof serves as to cover, to protect the building from the elements. Its visibility, shape, and materials make it one of the most important character-defining elements of a historic building. Number two, preserve original roof shapes and pitches. And number nine, do not add dormers, vents, and skylights to roof if viewable from a primary location. They should be placed inconspicuously on rear sections of the building. Number three, concerning questions about choosing an appropriate treatment. Note the Secretary of Interior introduction to the treatment of rehabilitation, treatment for rehabilitation explains guidance on identifying, retaining, and preserving character-defining features as always given first, because in rehabilitation, historic building materials and character-defining features are protected and maintained as they are in the treatment Rehabilitation provides for sensitive change. Alterations, some exterior and interior alterations to a historic building are generally needed as part of a rehabilitation project to ensure its continued use. But it is most important that such alterations do not radically change, obscure, or destroy character-defining spaces, materials, features, features, or finishes. Can the Historic Preservation Commission consider relevant factors other than the guidelines? Upon reviewing the zoning code, much what Rodney had just talked about, the HPC may consider various factors in addition to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. In the zoning code 18.85.050, the commission shall approve the application and issue a certificate of purpose if it finds the proposed material changes in the appearance would not have a substantial adverse effect on the aesthetic, cultural, historic, or architectural significance and value of the historic district or the historic district. In making this determination, the commission shall consider, in addition to any other pertinent factors, the following criteria. Reconstruction, alteration, new construction, renovations. Rodney just said, the commission shall issue a certificate of appropriateness for the above proposed actions if those actions conform in design, scale, building material, setback, landscaping, and to the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines. In the materials provided to council, I included a brief architectural description and referenced sources indicating the significance of the Stewart House. I also outlined the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines, the Stanton Historic District Guidelines, and provided a narrative concerning rehabilitation as a prescribed treatment. Because it is important for you to come to a clear conclusion, I asked each of you to view the roof from the street surrounding the property, and then to consider applicable guidelines. A combination of the supplied material and this in-person activity provided each member of the council the tools to determine the following. Number one, is the Stewart House very, is the Stewart House very significant within the historic district? Is it older than most others? Is it a rare example of form and style? And does that house retain a large degree of its exterior design and materials? Two, is the Stewart House roof, A, an important character-defining element? Is the roof viewable from a primary location, church and federal streets? Will the proposed dormers be inconspicuous when viewed from the rear South Washington Street? The rehabilitation standards provide for creating an addition to a historic building if the overall effect of the addition is a minimal change to the defining characteristics of the building, avoids the alteration of a feature that characterizes the building, does not create a false sense of historical development or adding conjectural features, preserves distinct性 features and craftsmanship, and the design is differentiated from the old, is compatible in massing, size, scale, and architectural features, and may the addition be removed in the future without impairing the form and integrity of the property. To work with those standards, we use guidelines. Secretary of Interior Roof Guidelines, alterations and additions for new use. It's very handy they divide this up into what they recommend and what they do not recommend. Recommended, designing rooftop additions, elevator or stair towers, decks or terraces, dormers or skylights. When. dormers or skylights, when required by a new or continuing use, so that they are inconspicuous and minimally visible on the site and from the public right away, and do not damage or obscure character-defining features. Not recommended. Changing a character-defining roof form, or damaging or destroying character-defining roof materials as a result of an incompatible rooftop addition, or improperly installed and highly visible mechanical equipment. They're not, we're not talking about mechanical equipment here. Stanton's Guidelines. Elements for the roof, one of the most important character-defining elements. Its visibility, shape, and material make it one of the most important character-defining elements of a historic building. Preserve the original roof shapes and pitches. Do not add dormers, vents, and skylights to the roof if viewable from a primary location. They should be placed inconspicuously on rear sections of the building. In conclusion, to establish your decision based upon the materials provided and your assessment of the view of the house, city council could approve the project if you determine that the proposed alteration of the roof does not significantly alter the historic architectural character of Stewart House. According to the standards and guidelines, the project may proceed if the proposed dormers are inconspicuous, if the dormers will be, not be viewable from a primary location, if the dormers are a minimal change to the defining characteristics of the building, temple form, including the roof, if the project avoids the alteration of a feature that characterizes a building, the roof, if the dormers do not create a false sense of historical development, if the dormers are not conjectural features, if distinctive features and craftsmanship are preserved, the roof, if the proposed dormers are differentiated from the old and are compatible in massing size, scale, and architectural features, and if the dormers may be removed in the future without impairing the essential form and integrity of the historic property. There's your assignment.
Okay. Right. Any questions?
This is Brenda Mead, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, when was the Historic District formed in Stanton?
I don't know that. I'll tell them. Um, the Newtown Historic District probably, I'm going to say in the nineteen eighties, maybe in the seventies, probably.
Have previous COAs been approved for the property?
Yes.
And how did they differ? They were, they were approved, how did they differ from this request?
One of those COAs was the addition of a very contemporary carport next to the building, and another was the change of an area that is a hyphen between the two older sections of the building.
So no COAs have been approved that would impact the main building itself?
You, you could argue that the, the additions to the hyphen possibly do impact that building.
Thank you.
From, is viewable from Washington Street.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you. Right. Ms. Brannick, welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. I know it's been a long night, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission this evening. We definitely appreciate your consideration of this matter as always. In thinking about this evening, I realized that we're all here because we're stewards of this great city. As members of council, you're stewards of the community's overall well-being, its economy, its finances, its properties and parks, overall its way of life. It's an honorable and weighty responsibility. Members of the Historic Preservation Commission serve as stewards of the buildings and historic resources in Stanton's historic districts. Appointed by you, we are charged with upholding the historic preservation ordinance and the adopted guidelines for rehabilitation. Those guidelines, as you, as we've noted earlier, follow national guidelines established for the preservation of historic properties across the country. Having served on the commission for numerous years, I can assure you that the commission takes that responsibility very seriously because we value those resources and believe that they greatly enhance our quality of life and the local economy through revitalization, tourism, and increased property values, all making our community a better place to live, visit, and do business. Mr. Goldenberg is now steward of one of the great historic properties in Stanton, and I believe he wants to be a good steward and care for the property in order for it to be preserved for future generations, just as the previous owners so thoughtfully did for over two hundred years. Mr. Spencer is also a steward, serving as the architect for this and many other historic building projects. As the architect, he has the duty of trying to balance the client's needs with the character and integrity of the building, not always an easy task. I say all this to emphasize the fact that in this matter, we are all here this evening for the same reason, to serve and make our community better by preserving our historic buildings. I have great respect for your role as council members. You undoubtedly have the most difficult job in the room. Thank you. And I do respect Mr. Goldenberg and Mr. Spencer and their roles. As a member of the Historic Preservation Commission, I believe that we respect all property owners who come before us and greatly appreciate their dedication and desire to protect and improve the homes and buildings in our historic districts. Making them livable and viable is a primary goal. Truly, it's a rewarding experience and a privilege to serve our community in this way. As a quick recap of the actions of the HPC, at its October twenty-fifth meeting, the Historic Preservation Commission denied a request for a certificate of appropriateness for modifications to the roof of the Stewart House at one twenty Church Street in Stanton's Newtown Historic District. Commission member Dennis Blanton clearly outlined the reasons for the denial of the application and referenced the following items in his motion from Stanton's Historic District Design Guidelines. Item one, section two, Guidelines for Planning Your Project and Introduction, item six A, quote, "Level of significance. Your historic building may be very significant within the historic district if it is older than most others, is a rare example of form or style, and retains a large degree of its exterior design and materials," end quote. The Stewart House is undeniably one of the most significant historic properties in Stanton. It is listed both on the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places, as well as the contributing structure in the Newtown Historic District. Built in seventeen ninety-one to ninety-three, the house is a unique expression of the American classical revival fostered by Stewart's friend, Thomas Jefferson, also referred to as Jeffersonian classicism or Jeffersonian neoclassical. According to the Virginia Department of Historic Resources Architectural Survey Form, quote, "With its temple form and somewhat naive two-story portico, the house stands as one of Virginia's earliest expressions of the classical revival, an architectural mode fostered in this country by Jefferson himself. Indeed, the Stewart House portico may be the oldest such portico on a Virginia house," end quote. This clearly supports item six A in our guidelines, with the house being older than most and a rare example of a form or style that retains its exterior design. The fact that the temple form is referenced is key in that the application for the proposed work would impact the appearance of the temple form by adding dormers to the roof, thus altering the shape of that original significant porticoed temple form, one of the defining features of the Jeffersonian neoclassicism. The proposed roof dormers would dramatically change the appearance of this character-defining feature of the Stewart House. The second item referenced in our motion was section five, Guidelines for Existing Buildings, element J, roof, quote, "One of the most important elements of a structure, the roof serves as the cover to protect the building from the elements. Its visibility, shape, and materials make it one of the most important character-defining elements of a historic building." Under that section, guidelines, item two, preserve original roof shapes and pitches. Also in that section, inappropriate treatments, item nine, do not add dormers, vents, and skylights to the roof if viewable, viewable from a primary elevation. They should be placed inconspicuously on rear sections of the building, end quote. The commission is following this guideline in order to protect the shape, the temple form of that gable roof, which has been clearly noted as one of the prominent character-defining architectural features of the Stewart House. The addition of dormers would alter the appearance of the temple form of the roof. While the dormers are proposed to be placed toward the rear of the roof, they would likely be visible from vantage points on Church Street and Federal Street and would be highly visible on Washington Street. These two items in Stanton's Historic District Design Guidelines support the commission's recommendation for denial of the COA. During our discussion, the commission suggested alternative treatments, such as skylights, that might be less obtrusive, and the commission asked the applicant if he would be interested or willing to consider other alternatives in return for continued review and discussion. However, the applicant declined both of those options. In summary, the fact that the Stewart House is one of Stanton's most significant historic homes and architectural styles is of primary consideration in this matter. This is not just my opinion or that of the commission, but also the opinion of some of the preeminent architectural historians and historic restoration and preservation specialists in the state. Calder Loth, the retired senior architectural historian for the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and longstanding member of the Commonwealth of Virginia Art and Architectural Review Board, states, quote, "Archibald Stewart's venerable seventeen ninety-one residence is a pioneering expression of the American classical revival, an architectural mode fostered by Thomas Jefferson. To my knowledge, it is Virginia's and possibly the nation's earliest example of a porticoed temple form domestic work." Stewart family tradition holds that Jefferson designed the house for Archibald Stewart. While Jefferson's authorship has not been documented, because, because Jefferson and Stewart were longtime close friends, it is highly likely that Jefferson influenced the scheme, one echoing the temple form that Jefferson espoused for the Virginia State Capitol. It is certainly correct to say that had Jefferson not existed, the Stewart House would not look the way it does. The Stewart House is also of exceptional architectural interest for surviving more than two centuries with minimal alteration to its original temple core form, temple form core, preserving a stately presence in Stanton's historic quarter. It's inevitable that buildings change as ownerships change, but any such change to a registered historic landmark of such unique architectural distinction should respect the integrity of the original design," end quote. Travis McDonald, Director of Architectural Restoration at Thomas Jefferson's Poplar Forest for over thirty years, confers, quote, "If it was any other house, I might say that the dormers would not detract from that facade view. But given that it is architecturally significant, I'd have to go with the standards that dormers would alter the original character of the roof, especially since it is a great survivor in form and detail," end quote. The Historic Preservation Commission realizes that this is not a restoration project or a museum project, but a proposed rehabilitation for the continued residential use of the property. We wholeheartedly endorse the continued use of our historic properties. That is what makes Stanton such a vital and viable community. Denial of this application by the HPC does not prohibit, prohibit the use of the property in its existing form, but protects the Stewart House from proposed changes that would dramatically alter the character and form of a rare architectural gem in Stanton. Thank you again for your consideration and support of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions if needed.
Are there any questions by council members or any comments?
I'd just like to say, I served on that committee liaison, and they bend over backwards to try to make sure that they do the best job they can, they're following the rules. And sometimes the rules aren't kind, you know? I mean, it's just, they, I know that they made the efforts to offer skylights, which they don't want to put in there, but it would be a different solution to lighting the upstairs. And I just, I know that they weren't trying to be oblique about this when they were telling Mr. Goldenberg that. So I just, they did their job, and that's all I want to say. And, and I was there.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Any additional, Vice Mayor Robertson?
Get this question out. No, Steve and I were talking. Is there a skylight at Monticello?
Yes, sir, and at Poplar Forest. Jefferson employed skylights, and they were quite hidden.
Probably because he was ambassador to France, and they started in sixteen something in France, correct?
I don't know that specifically, but I know that he did view skylights while he was in France, so.
Right. Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you. I'd like to enter into the record some photos I took today of the house, because obviously one of the issues is how viewable the roof is. And on the, I guess this is the north side, there is a very large evergreen, so that the photos you have in your packet are going to be identical to this one. Also took two photos from the south side. Now that it's, you know, the leaves are off the tree, I think it is more viewable, so I'd like to enter those into the record. I'm sorry, do not have a copy, an electronic version to show to the council members that are participating by Zoom.
Please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is not a public hearing, but at this time, I'm sure the commission would like to hear from the applicant and his agent.
The council would, yes, absolutely. Hello, welcome. Well, thank you.
I'll go first. So, does that come down? The two center? This right here? Okay, good evening. Wow, that's a lot right there, huh? I appreciate Mr. Strassler, Ms. Brannick, and of course, Mr. Rhodes has been very helpful in this, and I understand they're doing their jobs. So let's get started and let, let us, as the homeowners, tell you what our thoughts are on this. So I got a little bit of housekeeping here first. Because of this type of, you know, Facebook post by Ms. Mead, at this time, we don't think she's a fair judge of these proceedings, and Madam Mayor, I'd like you to ask her if she would recuse herself, please.
Counselor Mead, do you have a desire to recuse yourself, or will you recuse yourself?
I will not recuse myself. I have no financial interest whatsoever in this transaction. I would benefit in no way from, from what the result is, and I don't believe that that requires a recusal. I have a First Amendment right to express an opinion, and I did, and I don't back away from that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's on the minutes.
Yes. It's on the record, yes.
That she has politely declined to recuse herself.
Okay, yes, that it's on the record.
Okay. All right, here we go. So, in August, well, let me introduce myself. First, I'm Scott Goldenberg. It's my wife Krista, raise your hand, right? Madison Spencer, Maddie Moore, they're part of my architecture team. Krista and I currently live at two oh one Edgewood Road, Fairview, maybe it's the corner of Edgewood and Dogwood, maybe you've gone by and seen that historic home, which is quite nice as well. In August of this year, early August, Krista and I and our family perked In August of this year, early August, Krista and I and our family purchased, well, we purchased 118 South Washington, better known as the Garden Lot, and we purchased 120 Church Street, the Archibald Stewart House, or known locally as the Stewart House. It's a fabulous home. I think everyone here would agree that it's a beautiful architecture thing and something that is significant and noteworthy and something that San Tonians are very proud of. I know as a, as a long, longtime San Tonian, this is what I'm proud of in my town. So, we're very excited to purchase it, but it's, it was a bittersweet thing because the current occupants, the Cochrane family, would be ending a reign of two hundred and thirty-two years as stewards of the home, you know? And that's a, that's a big deal. I mean, you think about that, you think about how long that is, how long this one family was able to maintain ownership of this home. And there's, there's a couple of reasons for that. And we believe very strongly, there's, there's a couple of reasons why we're having this conversation, why we're here talking about this house today. And one is, is that the Stewart, Robertson, Cochrane families cared about this home, and they cared about their ancestors, and they made an effort amongst themselves to keep the home in the family. And in some instances, upending and changing lives to do it, making commitments as young men to stay in town and to, you know, commit to living there when their time came. The second part that we feel is really important, why this house is here, and let me be very clear about something as well, and we're going to talk about this a little bit. This is a private home. A private family home. This is not Monticello, Mount Vernon, it's not Poplar Forest, president wasn't born here. There's been great men that have lived in this house, but it is not a museum. It is owned by my wife and I, and it is a private family home. So, again, speaking of that, the reason that the house is still, still around and still viable is that the Cochrane family or the families that have lived there that have occupied it, the Robertson family, the Stewart's, they were able to make, and in some instances, significant changes to the house when it became their time to, to move in. And they, and they made those changes to reflect the era that they lived in, right? You can't have a 1791 home and expect it to work for you in 1984. It just doesn't. But you have to make specific and alterations to the home to try to make it livable for the families that were there. And I think you'll find in the, in the next pictures here, what I'm talking about. So this, to the right, is what you see today. That would be 120 Church Street today. What you see to the left is what you would have seen in around the late 1970s. Notice the dormers on the house, right? Right on the front of the house, they had dormers. They're not there anymore. Why aren't they there anymore? I don't know. But the reason they're not there is because the occupant at the house that moved in and took them off felt that it was easier for them to live in the house without the dormers. It was a change that they felt was needed to make. I mean, here's the, the back of the house, you can see that dormer sitting up there. That's not there anymore either, but that dormer was, was sitting there in the nineteen seventies. It had been there for, just like the dormers before, for over a hundred and thirty years, these dormers sat on this house. A hundred and thirty years. And they were removed? And I know the argument is they're not on the main, they're not on the main block, but I need you all to understand that the house has been significantly changed over the years. It is not what you see it as today. What you see it as today is not what it looked like when you were a kid, and it's not what it looked like when your parents were a kid or their grandparents were a kid. It's totally different in a lot of respects. The carport, obviously, the carport doesn't look like it, it belongs with this historic house, but the occupants at the time wanted to cover their cars. So, you know, it was their, their choice and their taste, and that's, and that's fine. It's obviously not an historic element, but it's there. And if you look up above it, and what I see every morning when I'm having coffee at crucible is more dormers on the house that are still there. I mean, do you all realize there are dormers on this house? It is not something that is foreign to the home. So, back of the house, this is seen from Washington Street, right? This is clearly seen, the glass, what they call the glass room over here to the left, which had been there for a hundred years, was replaced by a new rear entrance. So the occupants at this time, which are the occupants that I bought the home from, felt it easier for them to enter the house for their, for their guests, for the formal entrance, to move that from the front of the house, right? The gate, the stairs, the whole thing, to the back. Because, you know, I don't know, maybe Mr. Cochrane's got some bad knees, right? Like, so he, he can't walk up those steps. So this was really important for them to do. And this is not like hidden. This isn't like the guidelines call for, which is, you know, not to be seen, to be tucked in the back. This is an entrance. It is a statement entrance. And it was done by Fraser Associates around 2003. So it's modern era. You see the circular window up there, which again is a new architectural element, there's no other circular windows on the house. There's a, there's a circle on the front of the house, but that's, that's art. It's not a real window. I'm not sure y'all know that. But, you know, on the temple form, the temple front of the house, that's not a window. That's a new historical element that was added. Again, because they needed it. And, and that's fine. That's what they needed to do. Again, this is the back, as you see it, it's changed over the years. Our gate, oh, we have a gate here? Okay. So this is one of my favorite pictures. And it's on the, it's on Facebook all the time, right? I'm not on Facebook, but people send me this stuff. So if you see, there's the, the temple front of Stewart House, right? And to the right, you see another home. That's because that's what was there. Wasn't a little cottage at this point. There was a three-bedroom, two-bath, living room, dining room, kitchen, family room home to the right of this house on the property. And the occupant at the time, who, when he moved in, who had been born in that house, and his mother had been born in that house, and that house was a Civil War hospital. This thing goes back way, way to the, to the early 1820s, probably. What did he do? He tore it down. Why would he tore, tear a house down that he was born, one of Stanton's most significant, oldest homes, right there down? Because he needed to build a swimming pool for his wife to swim laps in. That's what he needed out of the house. That was what was important to him. Now, you know, they made the cottage back to what they thought it would look like back in the day, but these changes were made. This was done in 1980. This isn't like the 50s or the 40s. This is done after we've established Stanton Historic Foundation and after what Mr. Strassler thought that the, the Newtown was formed in the late 70s, is that? 1983. Right, right. So it was already on the historic and Virginia landmark when this happened. And I don't fault, I mean, the guy that, the occupant that did this was what I think is Stanton's greatest citizen, so I don't fault anything he did. But this was important to him. He needed this done. And so they made these changes. And so my point again is just to, just to explain to you that we're not coming in and saying, we want to make these drastic changes at 120 Church Street. We want to do what the occupants, which were Stewart family members, have done over the last 230 years. And we're just asking for the right to be able to do some of the same things that they have done to make the house livable for us. It's, it's fairly, you know, it's, it's a fairly easy request when you think about it in those terms, right? My, my last name is not Stewart or Robertson or Cochrane, but, but I should have the right to do similar things as long as, as long as I'm meeting the rules, right? The thing about this, very clearly, there's our gate. So, right, the gate, this is the gate of Stanton, Virginia, right? It's probably one of the most recognizable gates in all of Stanton. I don't think that's arguable, it's on the, 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 the street signs for Newtown. I mean, it is, this is, this is, this is, that's what it looked like for a long time. That, that picture was taken in 73, I think. I mean, what you see today isn't what the Stewart House always looked like, and I think the gate sure clearly shows that. So I think what's important to first understand is how the National Historic Register and the Virginia Landmark Register work, because it's been mentioned a lot, it was mentioned a lot, it was mentioned by Mr. Blanton a lot, it's been mentioned in a lot of the discussion of the house. This house is historically significant. There is no question about it. And it, and we think it's the nicest house in town, and that's why we bought it. We're, we're very clear about that, that we think this is the greatest house in town. And so we're very proud of the fact that, that we have, we're the occupant now, and we're trying to move forward to continue that. But I want to make it clear about the, the, the national, the historic designations. And you can read this, that under federal law, the listing of property, the national register places, no restriction on what a non-federal owner may do property, including destruction. I mean, you can tear down a, a National Historic Register home. As long as your local government allows for it, there are no rules about what you can and cannot do to a National Historic Register home. I think that's a misconception. People think if your home is on the National Historic Register or the Virginia Landmark Register, that you can't touch it. And as you can clearly see, this is the Virginia landmark, this is verbiage from Virginia Landmark website, what the register does not mean, this is the Virginia Landmark Register, this is one that was quoted over and over again in the Historic Preservation Meeting as such an important thing that we should be not touching the building, but clearly the guideline, the guidelines for, for having this designation does not prevent us from doing anything that we want. What we still have to do is follow zoning laws of Stanton, Virginia. Okay? So that's, that's something I want everyone to understand, because it's really a misconception. You think that if your home is on the National Historic Register, that it's on the Virginia Landmark Register, that you're just not allowed to touch it. And that is clearly not the case. And one of the, one of the most important parts about that, and why you see this verbiage in here, is because they're very careful about protecting our property rights. They, this is about protecting property rights. There's, there's no question that, that this verbiage in here is made so that you understand you can do what you want with your home. If you couldn't, they probably, people wouldn't sign up for this kind of thing. Also, to be, be very clear about the Virginia Landmark Registration, it was meant to, it's a Historic Preservation Meeting to say that it's such a great thing. Well, the truth is that if you're on the National Historic Register, they automatically sign you up for the Virginia Landmark Register. That's just, whether you want to or not, you are just automatically on it. And so I want people to understand also, very clearly here, that there are 33 properties and neighborhoods that have this designation. Thirty-three, which is great. I mean, I think that's a wonderful thing for our town, really. It really is. And Stewart House is just one of 33. Again, we're not arguing that it's historically significant. We, we, we agree that it is one of the most historically significant houses in town, but it is just one of, one of them. It is one of them. So I, I think that that's very important to understand. So the bulk of this thing comes down to, if, if you're going to change, make a change, you have to meet the zoning laws. That's what this whole conversation is about. It's about zoning, right? It's not about whether, what, what house you like the most, and how special the house is to, to Ms. Brannick, or, or to Mr. Blanton back there. It's, it is not about that, or to Mr. Strassler. It's about zoning. It's, that's all this is about, is about, do we, as Mr. Rhodes said, do we meet these guidelines? So, so let's figure that out real quick. So, when, when you're deciding to make changes on your home, when you, when you're getting ready to, to buy a house like Stewart House, you get these out, this is it, right? This is the Secretary of Interior's, the federal, and this is the local guidelines. And so you have to read all of this. This, this is, this, it's, it's fairly challenging, but it's a responsibility, and you, and you have to understand what you can and can't do to the house. What's really important here, really important is, when you're buying a property like 120 Church, you do this before you go in to write your check. This is, you do your due diligence. You figure out what these things say, what you're allowed to and what you're not allowed to do. And so you have some idea of what you can and cannot do to your property. So, what are we proposing? Oh, well, to go back, before I get into what we're proposing, I want to make sure you also understand that these guidelines are written, they're written for us. They're written for citizens of Stanton to, that are in a historic district, they're written for one thing, and that is not to tell us what we can't do, but to tell us how to do it right. That's what these things say. They're about change, and they're encouraging, but this is from Fraser Associates who wrote these, wrote these, right? This is from the government, they wrote these. This is, this is from their website, I mean, from their Facebook page. And they, these things are supposed to encourage rehabilitation, encourage it, right? This is, this is, this is what we're trying to do here. We're trying to, to navigate the changes that are going to happen in these historic neighborhoods, because they're going to happen. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get people to come into the historic neighborhoods and fix up their houses and make small changes to them here or there that will help them make the house more livable, or the property more usable, if it's like a business. That's, that's what these are about. They're about encouraging rehabilitation and managing change. They are not about stopping, stopping people from coming into these places and saying, you can't do that. They're about telling us how to do it correctly. This is our proposal. Four dormers on the rear of the north end of 120 Church Street. You can see them, where they are placed back, they are, they are, and, and this is, this changes originally from our original proposal that we brought, Historic San Preservation. We have an effort to help hide them even more and meet the guidelines. We have moved them back even further to South Washington Street. So, they are in line with the current bays of windows. They are thirty feet from the architectural significant feature of this house, which is the temple front. The argument has been, from the very beginning, and you heard it here a bunch, that we're affecting the architectural significance of this home by messing with the temple front. And we clearly are not. We clearly are not changing anything at all that is architecturally, the architectural integrity of the most important thing in, at Stewart House, which is the pediment, the columns and the, and the porticos. That's what you see. When you look at Stewart House, you see that in your face. The roof line is just that. It's not, it's It's not, it's not part of the, the temple form in this case. It's already been compromised by the 1844 wing. It's not a pure temple form anymore. It is not what Jefferson brought over and, and, and the, and the, and the Virginia Capitol looks like, or did look like. This has already been compromised. There's a, there's a porch and a bump out on the, on the north side right there. The back of it is not symmetrical, like a pure temple form would be. It is not what these other experts, who are not architects, are saying that we're destroying. That is not the case here. What we're doing is enhancing it so that we can renovate that attic and use that space to make this a more usable family home. That's exactly what we're trying to accomplish here, and we're trying to do it without destroying the architectural integrity.
Scott, can I ask a question?
You sure can, Mark.
I'm looking at the proposed elevation. It says December 8, 2022. Have you, or your architect, changed that since it came before the historic, moved back further?
We've moved it back further in order to help reduce the view from the, the, the primary elevation.
So, if they haven't seen this?
The Historic Preservation Commission has not seen this.
Okay.
Has not seen this, but-
How dramatic is the movement?
Madison?
Uh, Matty, dimensionally, it's eight feet back. It's, it's been, it's, the original dormers occupied the, the, the rear 50% of those rooms. So, they, in my opinion, did not conflict with the temple front of the house. We subsequently, in order to, Church Street, moved them further back in order to, and when you do these things architecturally, you want to make, if you want to select alignments that are either aligning over windows or between windows. There's a geometric gaze being played in order to emphasize the appropriate placement.
Okay. So, so this, this is our proposal, and I understand that it's, it's a little different than what they saw, but you guys, I'm getting to present for the first time. You're the new, you're the new commission, right? You're the new, new Historic Commission, so isn't that correct?
May I interject and just show the council what was reviewed by the commission?
Right. It's a, it's a slight alteration. We think it looks-
It was between the windows.
It was, sir, yes.
Now, it's over windows, two, three and, two and three.
Yes. Right. So, let's talk about applying for, for the, for the certificate of appropriateness for this project. So, when you apply for the certificate of appropriateness, you, you first- Rodney?
Rodney, can you let-
Yeah. Terry, I saw it, I saw it.
Right. You first submit your proposals to what is your staff, right? Your expert is Frank Strassler. Our tax dollars go to pay Frank, to pay Historic Stanton Foundation to be our staff, your staff. We don't have a, a person on, on staff here in the city who, who does the historic review. Frank does it for us. And, and I know Frank came up here, and he gave you that whole, I didn't really understand a lot of it, and I've been studying this for months, more than that, and I didn't get, I didn't get a lot of what he said, but I will synthesize it for you for Frank. Frank said yes. That's Frank's, right there. That's his, I move that the certificate of appropriateness be approved. So, Frank Strassler and the, and Historic Stanton Foundation said yes. Your expert, the person that we paid to review this, said yes. That is not arguable, and it is not debatable. This is a letter from Brian Clark Green, who is the preeminent expert on, on Thomas Blackburn, who they, who they believe did the, the wing in 1844, who is also a Jeffersonian scholar. And he clearly says, in my professional opinion, the design proposed to, to you by architects Madison Spencer and Ralph Harvard, makes commendations for the occupants while respecting and enhancing the original design. This is one of the top historic architects in the Commonwealth, if not the East Coast, and he clearly looked at this in detail. He is an expert on this, and he agrees with us as well. The problem with this discussion now is, I have experts, then Ms. Brannick has experts, right? She, she quoted some of her experts, right? So, it, historical architecture is, in its sense, just a little bit, you know, it's, it's not an exact science. Everyone has their own, their own opinion of it. Is that correct? It's subjective.
Subjective.
Right. So, Frank weighed in, he said yes. We went in front of the, 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 the board, and of course, Terry told you we were there, and that he was there, and he, and this is the whole thing. And they said to us, just like Ms. Brannick said, there were two things that we did not meet, two, right? And the first one, which is really an important one, they said that we did not meet the level of significance in what would be the intro, the, the introductory part of the guidelines. So, when you open the guidelines up, gee, I mean, I hope we paid the Frasers by the page, because this is, when you open the guidelines up, there's an introductory section, and that introductory section tells you, oh, you bought a, a historic home, and in an historic neighborhood, or historic property. You need to identify what, what neighborhood that is, and what the rules are there, and what guy, what part of the guidelines you have to understand, do they pertain to you? Yes, we understand we are in an historic neighborhood. We're in the Newtown Historic Neighborhood. So, when they talk about, at that point, it says, you need to pick a treatment, right? And, and the treatments are, you get, there's, there's four choices you get to choose. You get rehabilitation, preservation, what was the other one? Reconstruction, and there's a, there's a third one that doesn't, that no, that, that, that no one really does. So, there, 99% of the people do the rehabilitation treatment, okay? That's what these guidelines are. These guidelines, our local guidelines, are only for rehabilitation. They don't include any other treatments in there. There is no preservation treatment in here to follow. It's just not. It's, it was never written, because everyone does a rehabilitation treatment. What we were told at our hearing was that our house was just too significant to ask for a rehabilitation treatment, that we would need to use a preservation treatment. Well, it is very clear in the federal guidelines, which is the Bible, that's what these are written off of. These are, our local guidelines are based off of, off of the national guidelines. It is very clear in the national guidelines that the guys in themselves cannot, in themselves be used to make essential decisions about which features of the historic building should be saved, which can be changed, meaning they cannot tell you which treatment you can pick. It's a property rights issue. They, they can't just say, you can't ask for that. You, this is, this is America. You can ask to do anything you want to your home. You just have to be able to meet the zoning requirements of your city and your town. That's what this is about. It's about zoning. So, in essence, by saying that we have to use a preservation treatment, right, this is what they're saying, you're not, you're not even allowed to ask for the dormers. By saying that we have to use a preservation treatment, well, there are no rules for preservation treatments. What, we don't have any due process here at all, at all. I mean, we need to, what we're asking for, they're telling us, we're not even allowed to. That, that's what that significance, that, that's what that means, too significant under that section. It's not a guideline. It is not. The guidelines start in Chapter 4. And you can go to the, to the, y'all, y'all have a copy of this, but the, the table of contents clearly delineates what is an introduction, what is, what is an explanation, what they're talking about in that historic, your historic building may be significant in this, that isn't for us. That is a, a, that is a comment that we need to make, that we need to decide on in order to pick our preservation treatment, our, our, our historic treatment. That's one of the things. But there are two other things that they don't take into consideration that are also in that, in that introduction, and that is the physical condition of the house and its use. And so, the Historic Preservation Commission, the locals that, that ruled on this, they have no idea what the, what the use is and what the, what the condition of the home is. They're not privy to that. They're not. They're only privy to be able to walk out, like you guys are, to walk around the block and take a look at it. That's all they can see. They don't have any idea of what needs to be done to make the home more livable. And this home, and even though it is in, been taken care of really nicely by, needs a lot of work. It needs to be rehabilitated. And we intend to, to touch every room, and every piece of that property is going to get rehabilitated. And so, they, you can't just make a decision based on one of those three factors. It's not allowed. It, it's, it's our decision to make. It is not their decision to make. Their decision is to see whether we followed the guidelines or not. That's exactly what's, what's going on here. They basically said, it's too, it's too, it's too significant, right? That's their thing. It's, it's, it's too historically significant to touch. And if that is the case, and this is really the, the main thing about this whole thing, if that is the case, then y'all need to list it in your guidelines and say that before someone buys it. It needs to be called out, that you're not, there are certain homes or properties in this city that are too historically significant to ask for rehabilitation treatment. That's exactly what happened here. So, we don't have that in here. There's no list in here. We paid our money for the house without knowing that somebody could come back behind us and say, no, 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 no. That's just too historic, and you're not allowed to touch it. That's what happened at that meeting. We were looking for an opportunity to propose these dormers, and they basically said, you don't even get that opportunity, although they did take the opportunity to ding us for a rehabilitation guideline that we didn't meet. So, first they say, we're not allowed to even apply for the rehabilitation guidelines. We need to use a rehabilitation treatment. We used to have to use a preservation treatment, but then they went ahead and said, no, you can see it from the, from the roof. Which is it? Which, 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 which one are they saying, right? We believe that the historical significance argument is not valid. We just believe that, and so does other historical preservationists and architects that we've talked to. They just don't believe that that's something that our Historical Preservation Commission can mitigate from their seats up there. They just, it is, it is a instruction to the property owner on how to true, choose a treatment, and I've already showed you that they're not allowed to tell you which treatment to pick. So, we're picking the rehabilitation treatment. We're asking for dormers. We'd like to put dormers in where you see them, right there. After, at the end of all this, there's only one guideline we don't meet. If you get, if you move past the significance, which we don't think is valid, there's only one guideline, and that guideline is the roof guideline, DJ, which says, inappropriate treatment, do not add dormers, vents, and skylights to roof if viewable from a primary elevation. They should be placed inconspicuously on rear sections of the building. The commission noted that the area where the dormers were added is visible from Church Street, primary elevation, as well as South Washington and Federal Street, which they talked about, which Frank talked about as well, and so is he. It doesn't matter that you can see them from South Washington or Federal Street. That's not in the guidelines. This is about zoning. This is about following the rules. That, that's not the rules. You can't just make up the rules. That seems to happen a lot in historic preservation. There seems to be this, well, it's, it's the same as the, the, the view. This clearly says can be seen from the street, period. That's the guideline. But when I, so I suggested to them, what you can see is this corner from Federal, at the corner of Federal and Church, looking back up the hill. It's about, what did we say, Matty? It was about 150 feet away. 150 feet away, you can take a look, and this was taken when there was more leaves on the trees, you can take a look. So, I made a suggestion to them that I would, I could fix that by just putting up tall bushes right there that you would never be able to see again. I was told that landscaping does not count. But it doesn't mention landscaping in the, in the guidelines. There's no mention of what could block your view, and if you go back and read, you know, minutes of past Historic Preservation Commission meetings, they talk about landscaping being a, being in, in the sightline and, and, and blocking the view. We, we offered that, and they said it didn't matter, but it needs to be considered. It does, because you can put landscaping there, not just, stuff that will not, the leaves won't come off of, and I can block that view. I promise you, I can block that view. Now, I don't think we want to do that, right? I, I don't think that's the goal here, is to totally block out Stewart House. I mean, we have, what was it, 230, 235 feet of street frontage on Church Street. You could only see those dormers from about 5% of it, 5% of it. 95% of it you cannot see. So, these are guidelines. The, these are, these, we're, we're trying to meet the intent of guidelines, and we believe we have. We believe that the intent is being met. We've put the dormers as far back as we can. We've put them inconspicuously in the rear. We have limited the views from the primary elevation. The views from the other elevations don't matter. The guideline that we failed says the primary elevation. That's just the way it is.
Mr. Goldenberg, I truly appreciate your passion concerning the Stewart House, but are you just about, okay?
I'm gonna put a bow on it.
You can wrap it up for us.
I'm gonna put a bow on it. This is a lot. I mean, you've heard what happens, it's a lot to understand.
Yeah.
So, you know, most important thing, one of the most important things too, is that those, the, the dormers can be removed. They can be removed at any time. If the next occupant comes in, and he doesn't like the dormers, he can take them off, and the, and the house will go back to looking exactly like it does today. And that's a guideline that we've met under the, under the federal guidelines, and that, and that's something that's very important to understand. I think the most important thing to understand here too, which I did bring up, because it's not a zoning issue, is that the, the biggest part of this is, the only person, the only people that we cared about making sure we're okay with this is Stewart and Emily Cochran, the people that we bought the home from. Those are the only people that mattered to Krista and I, that, that this was okay. And they are 110% behind us. They feel that this is totally appropriate for the house, and they understand how hard it is to live in that house, because it's not set up for, for, for a family. It's set up for two people. That's just the way it is. Two people have lived in that house for the last 100 years. That's just a fact, right? Because they all came late in life. So, what we're saying is, give us an opportunity. We feel that we've met the guidelines. We're not asking for an exception, or, 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 or a favor, or, or anything, you know, or variance. We feel that we have met the guidelines as they are written in our local code and in the National, in the Secretary of Interior National Code. And I, I would ask you all to, to look at what we've proposed here and say, yeah, I think the intent to meet the guidelines is there. It totally is. We're not messing with the front. We're not, we're not messing with this historical significance. That's what you see right there, the front, portico, the, and the thing about the dormers on, you want to talk about skylights? Like, yeah, this is Monticello. What do you see up there? Dormers. Dormers came before skylights. Dormers came before skylights. They did. Yes, there are skylights on Monticello now, but they've replaced these dormers. The dormers were there first. Poplar Forest, that's Poplar Forest. Dormers. Dormers came first, skylights came second. We like to put dormers up there. We think if you allow us, if you're okay with putting skylights up there, then you're already violating the laws, it is, as well. Nine is nine. It says dormers or skylights, you can't do it. So, why can't we have the dormers? Why do we- Why do we have to say, oh, yeah, Frazier wants us to do skylights? So we'll do, that's not what's going on here. What's going on here, we're trying to meet the guidelines and do what we would like to do for the home. Questions?
All right. Any questions or comments by city council members?
Frank just seriously came today on 12/8.
The changes that we've
Yeah, where the dormers got moved back.
Well, we took the comments from historical, the Preservation Commission, and which we felt the only guideline we didn't meet was the view. So we're trying to mitigate that. We're doing our best to try to move them back so you cannot see them from the street. And moving that back even further reduces the view from Church Street. It clearly does. They are really, really hard to see, if you can see them at all. And you might see them from one little corner there. But we're trying to help, we're trying to compromise. We're trying to help. We're trying to make, our goal is to meet the guidelines. We're trying to follow the rules. We really are. We're not destroying this home. We certainly are not. These are other examples that you see of dormers. This is one right here in town. You know that building, right? You can walk there. So if somebody says that you don't put dormers on the temple form, well, that's not true. It's just not true. Any other questions I can answer for you? I appreciate your time. I know it's the last meeting, I'm the last guy to talk, and I don't mean to keep you. It's late. But this has been going on for a while. It's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of stuff to understand. And I just want you to know, we've met the guidelines. We have.
If I might interject on one aspect, Scott. And again, I think it's worth reiterating within the
Mayor.
Can you come through the, yes?
My name is Madison Spencer. So I won't be long-winded. The guidelines are intended as an aid to assist in applying the standards to all types of historic buildings. They are not meant to give case-specific advice or address exceptions or unusual conditions. We have with this house unusual conditions and circumstances as a result of the ongoing adjustments that have been made every generation of ownership. And if you go to the guidelines themselves relative to roofs, they say recommended, not recommended, they don't say not permitted. They're offering these as suggestions that don't address necessarily exceptions or unusual conditions. So I think it's important to emphasize that. And this is a world, I know, and I'm happy to answer questions. I served on the board of Department of Historic Resources in Richmond for seven years when Kathleen Kilpatrick was director. I've, this is my life. It's what I do up and down the Eastern Seaboard, from Charleston to New York City and Maine. So I'm happy to answer any question.
We appreciate that. Any questions? Councillor Claffey? No?
Do you want to make a motion?
You have a question, Councillor Holmes? I'll entertain a motion.
This is Brenda Mead.
Councillor Mead.
I move that council wholly affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission denying the requested certificate of appropriateness for the reasons on which the commission based its decision.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
This is Carolyn Dole. I'll second that.
Right. There's a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to hear one thing from Frank. Originally approve this?
I approved it and wrote, I recommended approval with reluctance that was missing from that document you were shown. There's a reason for reluctance, and that had to do with the significance of the building and changing that significance. Also, in that, and I mentioned this in my review for you, is that it seems to me that some of the guidelines conflict with each other. Some say yes, some say no. And so as my initial review, somewhat felt that they had made a strong case and that we had based our guidelines on that primary view of the house. However, since that time, I've done a lot of walking around the house and seeing it. It's pretty darn viewable from Church Street. You just got to walk the other side of Church Street. It's all viewable.
He said, yeah.
With reluctance, Scott. And it was written, right there. You remove that from your document. It was frustrating. And so
We understand. Thank you.
So the shape of the roof is being changed by adding a dormer. That's opposite of the guideline. The proposed dormers are inconspicuous, possibly, possibly. But they're in full view from Washington Street. The dormers will not, the dormers will not be viewable from a primary elevation. They are. They just are. The dormers are a minimal change to the defining characteristics of the building. Well, that roof form, that temple form, it's not just the front of the building. It's not a facadeectomy. It's the whole building. It changes the characteristic of the roof. The project avoids the alteration of a feature that characterized the building. No, it alters it and it doesn't avoid it. The dormers do not create a false sense of historical development. Well, actually, the house, that 1790 section of the house did not develop with dormers. It didn't. Now, yes, other buildings used them, but this one didn't. It wasn't designed, Stewart didn't design it with that.
Frank, when was the addition added?
1844. Different architectural style, different architect, different building.
But it would be historic in itself.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. And those changes made to it would never have been approved by the commission in the 1970s, 19s. It just wouldn't.
When did the Stewart House fall into the historic guidelines? What?
City of Stanton passed their first guidelines in 1996 and passed the zoning that regulates changes to historic properties in five historic districts in 1996.
And none of these changes have been, none of the changes to the house have been done since the ordinance was put in?
Oh, yes. Yeah, there have been two, at least two different series of certificate of appropriateness for the car porting, as well as for the changes on the South Washington side.
In the entrance?
Yeah.
Is this moving?
No, it was not. That was what they said, 1980 or something.
70 or so.
Yeah, it was not, there was no zoning at that time, keeping it. And also, they wouldn't have allowed tearing down that house.
Frank, you haven't seen this until tonight?
Right.
And the commission has not seen this?
Right.
And it's significantly different than what you did see.
Yeah, they moved the dormers back. I mean, it's still, the dormers are on the roof.
That affected the site from Washington Street?
The guideline now, the guideline, that's not the primary elevation.
Okay.
Right. But we also, but we also, the City of Stanton, in its zoning ordinance, refers to the Secretary of Interior guidelines and standards. And so therefore, those are the primary documents. The local guidelines are an interpretation of those.
But we didn't get that. But that wasn't a finding in the Historic Preservation Commission meeting.
It was outlined in the review for that.
It wasn't listed as a finding.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
Matt, Mayor, I'd like to amend the the movement to send it back to the full Historic Preservation Commission for a review because of the fact that when the meeting was originally held on October 25th, only three members of the council were present. And it was done on a split vote at that time. It was a two to one vote. So if we were to hear from the full board of five people, we could possibly have an entirely different outcome in the vote. And this material that has been proposed tonight, well, this is the first time I've seen it. Of course, it is not in our packet. It's not in our agenda packet. So it looks like it's a new proposal to me. And I think we need to consider it again. Now, it's a very heated subject, and I don't think we should rush into anything. I see the significance. I know the house. I've toured your house.
Can I ask for a yes, no vote?
Okay, no, no, sir. We, the city council has the floor at this point, but thank you.
And I'm just saying, if we were to get the two members in there and go through this again based on the new information provided today, December 8th, that we did not know about, based on our agenda packets and everything, then maybe we'll have a different viewpoint on it. And let's not rush into this at this point. So it's late. I hope that we will take an amended motion.
Right. There's a motion on the floor, an amended motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Right. Vice Mayor Robertson has second. Mr. Blair, I know it's late, but we vote on the amendment first, correct?
Right. You would now have a discussion on Councillor Claffey's amendment and then vote on the amendment and see if it passes or not.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
The Historic Preservation Commission met in a quorum. It was a legal vote on their part.
It was, but they didn't have the information they have now.
And it I, I, I'm sorry. I think this is
Well, and Brenda too, and I'm spitting my cotton-picking teeth out, but I think it's important to say, yes, it was a quorum. But when you're talking about a house like this, it needs to be the full commission, especially with new material.
And does that mean that if the full commission denies the COA, that there will not be another discussion, that there won't be another appeal? I don't believe Mr. Rose will accept it.
It will go through the same process.
It is.
Okay. So based off of the new, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I want to make it clear, just for the record, that Mr. Claffey would be making a motion to remand it to the Historic Preservation Commission. Correct. Based on this new evidence or the new plan proposal.
With today's date.
So it's not an amendment to my motion?
It is an amendment.
No, we had three options here.
Mr. Blair?
To reverse or to remand the matter back to the commission.
Okay. But it's an amendment to the motion.
I think it would be, Ms. Mead, I think it would be best termed a substitute because it is substantively changing what you originally proposed.
So substitute motion.
So do I have to agree to a substitute motion?
No, ma'am, you do not.
And there does not have to be a vote on my motion?
Depending on the vote here on Mr. Claffey's substitute motion, substitution, yes.
All right. One thing I would like to state, Mr. Goldenberg, you indicated that this is your house and your wife's house together. And I appreciate that. But please understand that this is the Stewart House. So therefore, it really belongs to all of Stanton. It's very near and dear to every Stantonian. All right. With that, we will be voting on the substitute motion first. Mr. Kessaker, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole?
No.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Oh, I hate to put the historic Stanton back through this mess.
Yes or no?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. That takes us on to matters from the city manager.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Oaks. I'd like to start by taking a moment to talk about
This is Carolyn Dole. I don't understand that last vote. Were we voting to substitute, yes or no?
Right. Now that that motion has been substituted, we need another vote on the substitute motion.
All right. So therefore, the motion, the substitute motion itself needs to be voted on as well. Okay. All right. Mr. Kessaker, call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Oh.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
No.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Sorry, folks, I know it's late. All right. We've had a few council members to leave to go to the restroom. It's awfully late. We can take a five-minute break or we can keep going. All right. Hey, the city council is back from break. We're now under matters from the city manager.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
So I'd just like to say, start with a few comments about the personal property tax. I know that they were due on Monday, but I just want to say a few things based on some questions that we received over the last couple of weeks. So as far as when the bills were mailed, because there were some questions about that, Treasurer Johnson confirmed that they were mailed the same time as last year, which is about the 30-day mark from when bills are due. And this year, they were mailed on November 4th. Virginia State Code requires that bills are mailed no later than 14 days prior to when taxes are due. Treasurer Johnson and Commissioner of Revenue Reagan work together each year to get through this process as quickly as possible. Tax books are due September 1st, but Ms. Reagan turns them over as soon as they are completed, early, whenever possible. From there, it takes a few weeks to turn the book into actual bills and get them into a file for our mailing vendor. And once the file is submitted, we are in a queue with other localities for mailing. And then we have to rely on the postal service, which can be slow sometimes. Bottom line is they go out as early as possible. As far as why assessments increase so much, the Code of Virginia charges the Commissioner of Revenue to use the values published in a nationally recognized pricing guide as of January 1st of the tax year. All localities in Virginia use one of three values, loan, trade, or retail, in the J.D. Power Guide. For many years, Stanton used the retail value. But as explained in the bills, the city dropped down to the trade value for 2022. And there was also an increase in the personal property tax relief percentage, up 3% from 2021. These actions were taken in an effort to offset the increase in values that were drastically affected by the vehicle market. Speaking of which, there has been an ongoing shortage of supply in both new and used vehicles in the market, which I can personally attest to, having been looking for one. This is, there's also been a high demand from rental companies and regular consumers driven by low interest rates and other factors. In many cases this year, vehicles purchased in recent years have trade values that exceed the original purchase price. In particular, popular models of Toyota and Honda have maintained very close to MSRP as they are in high demand. Value of assessments for January 1st reflects the value of average trade-ins of that model at the beginning of the year. Ms. Reagan's source said J.D. Power indicates that as inventory increases and interest rates rise, we should see a drop in values for January 1st, 2023, which is good news. As far as how often the city can build, yes, some localities do bill twice a year for personal property. And if we were to go that route, according to Ms. Reagan, her office would need to assess personal property in January through March, when they are also assessing business license. As a result, she would need more deputies to do both at the same time. Conversely, in the summer, she would have little work for staff. The treasurer would need to run two billion cycles for personal property in addition to real estate. So additional labor would be needed for collection. And finally, finance would need to account for having the revenue in two separate fiscal years, similar to how real estate works. There would be budget impacts to consider as well. Going to twice-a-year billing would require additional staff in three different departments. And at least for the commissioner's office, would completely align their workflow in an unbalanced manner. And any additional staff required for the commissioner revenue or treasurer's office would be 100% locally funded, with no revenue for these positions from the compensation board. All right. On a lighter note, I have a few more things to announce. The community and city council is invited to visit Montgomery Hall Park along with Chris Tuttle and Parks and Recreation decorated the building inside and out. Another item is that construction for the Rockaway Street water line replacement project is anticipated to begin next week. We are already notifying the affected residents, and this project is funded by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. A really good piece of news is that Parks and Recreation received a gift of $10,000 from the community foundation to fund tree plantings. The gift is in honor of Susan Blackley, the city's first horticulturalist, and it will fund the purchase of about 80 trees to replace trees lost in the July 6th storm. The city lost 142 trees on public property in the storm, so this donation will be a huge help. Second, Parks and Recreation will be receiving a donation from Shenandoah Green to cover preventative tree care on the large black walnut tree behind the bandstand in Gypsy Hill Park. That donation will cover pruning, adjusting the lightning protection, adding a support cable, and doing some cleanup. The Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library has again achieved accreditation by the American Alliance of Museums, the highest national recognition afforded to the nation's museums. The Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library has been accredited since 1976, so this is indeed wonderful news for our community and for the library. A Stanton property has been named in the National Register of Historic Places, the Goodlow House. The registry is an honorary designation that recognizes our nation's historic places that are significant. And the Goodlow House is a 1927, 1927 colonial revival house on the north side of Stanton. Okay, almost done. The city's tourism department has submitted an application for tourism ARPA funds in the amount of $60,000. The funds will be used for marketing research in a fall 2023 marketing campaign, and we'll use our insights from this marketing research to inform our marketing strategy. Finally, well, not quite finally, one other note about that. In 2019, the tourism department project fully funded a, an ornament, I'm sorry, fully funded the mural. There's now an ornament at Latitudes that features the mural, so go check that out. And there's also the latest Stanton on Tap Tourism E-Newsletter features all the places. You can buy an ornament that feature the city of Stanton, so check that out as well. Finally, a reminder that there's no second meeting in December, and I wish everyone happy holidays and a joyous new year. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Oaks? I truly apologize, I know everybody wants to get out of here, but I would like on the record for its stated, know that in the previous item, the applicant asked Ms. Mead to recuse herself, and I just would like it stated for the record, the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act only requires a recusal of any counselor if they have a financial interest or what's called a personal interest, meaning that they own property or business affected by the transaction. Ms. Mead did not have that, and so she certainly was within her legal rights to comment and participate in the matter.
All right, thank you for the point of clarification. All right, that takes us to matters from the public. This part of city council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. A copy of the Stanton City Council's Matters from the Public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk and online at the city of Stanton's webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with those rules before commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call, identify yourself, and complete your remarks within five minutes. All right, we'll start with folks in the audience. Welcome back, Mr. Fosse.
My name is Albino Alba Fosa, I live at 401 Boling Street. I have nothing to say to you all today. I will wait until January, the 2nd, Thursday in January, okay? You all have a Merry Christmas and enjoy your life. Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
All right, Mr. Kessaker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Would anyone else from the audience care to address the city council? Welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Mary Miller, 471 Albemarle. I'm exhausted. I mean, he stood here and yelled with pressured speech for over an hour, and the clock is ticking for me, and it's just so late, I just, I just, I just don't get it. You know, I'm pretty new to Stanton, I've only been here almost five years, but what I hear all, all the time is, "The heritage, we have our heritage, our heritage." Well, Marnie Gibbs took me on tour of Stanton, and the highlight by far was the Stewart House. I mean, it just stood out, it's just been here for over 200 years, and who's, who does it belong to? I mean, here comes this man, I don't know where Mr. Goldenberg's from, but, you know, he wants what he wants, and that's that, and what about the people of Stanton? What about the history? And how long is he gonna live? He's gonna put the dormers in and have them there for 30 years, and then he's dead. I mean, you know, I think the people of Stanton should have some rights in their own town, just seems to me, but I'm new, and I don't understand too much about heritage. I came to talk about something else, but obviously, nothing else is on the agenda tonight. So, I don't know if you've ever heard of Eli Wiesel, he got a Nobel Prize, and he was in Auschwitz and Buchenwald, and when he got, I don't know if you have anybody with PTSD, but they really can't talk about it for a long time afterwards, and it was 10 years before he wrote his first book, Silence. Subsequently, he wrote 56 other books. I was fortunate to hear him speak twice. And he says, "The opposite of love is not hate, but indifference." So that's why I come here to speak. I mean, I don't know if anybody hears me, I don't know if anybody thinks that I'm right or wrong, or up or down, but I'm not indifferent, I really care, and the people I came to care about, to talk about tonight, that I really care about are the same people that don't have much of a say in our society and are dying of a cancer that they shouldn't be dying of, but they don't have healthcare and they're poor, and that's the way it is. But, so, Eli Wiesel said that he continues to testify about what people do to other people, and why does he continue to testify? And he says, "So I won't become like them." So I want to ask you, the people that are leaving, and the people that are coming to join the city council, who are you? And what is your essence, and what influences your life? So, some of you have finished serving, some of you continue to serve, and some of you are coming on to serve. And so, when you leave, what will be your legacy? What will people say about you? What will you have done? What will you have stood up for? And will you live up to that that's essential, that is your essence? And can you reach out from that? And who influences you? And who are your cronies? And what really makes you stand up and live to the trueness of your essence? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessaker, does anyone have their hands raised?
No, ma'am.
All right. Would anyone else from the audience? Welcome, Ms. Connors.
Thank you. Cindy Connors, 106 Skyline Avenue. Just thank you, Leslie, for the information on the personal tax bill, but if you, if you do watch Facebook and other social media, the traffic was incredible over these bills, and I understand the practical side of what was described to us, but there are people in real need in Stanton that have an inability to pay, or don't have a checking account, don't have the cash right now, and then if they try to use an electronic payment, they suffer a larger payment because of fees. And I think creative people on this council and the staff could find some ways to make, to ease the burden, especially since this is a really freakazoid sort of one-off period of time because of COVID, that a car could theoretically be worth more than what you originally paid for it. It's a weird construct right now, and people need relief, the citizens of Stanton have asked for some relief there, so I hope we can do some strategizing on that. Thank you to Terry, Carolyn, and Brenda, and I'm really excited about working with the new city council. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kessaker?
No, ma'am.
All right, would anyone else from the audience care to address the city council? Welcome.
Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. It's been one heck of a year, hasn't it, ladies and gentlemen? We are at the tail end. This is the last city council session, but I do want to point out that a certain council member said something about, there was a grant for a sidewalk, and it hasn't been approved yet, but on the West End, it actually goes from Morrisville Road, and it goes past the Two by Two Learning Center. So if you ever drove by the West End, you would see that sidewalk, and that grant was completed.
No, I need to correct you, sorry, but I'm talking from Morris Mill West to Food Line. There's no sidewalk there.
We don't engage with the public at this point, so...
Well, I just did, because I won't be here anymore.
Please proceed. Okay, so if that's the clarification, then that's my mistake, but if I'm right, you know, but just had to bring that up. Second, I am also glad to see that Alice Woods and Michelle Edwards and Brad Arrowood are here, and I know I've said my congratulations about their victory before, but now that you're in person, so this is what you have to look forward to for the next four years. Are you excited? Well, I'm looking forward to seeing the new council energy that is coming in January, so everything, it looks like it's going to be a little bit more balanced. I do want to talk about that while we were running our campaigns, I have to say that I'm very proud that all of us candidates that ran, we had compliments from various voters saying that we were cordial, it was the most, it was the least drama-free campaign that has ever ran in this election. And I am hoping that once the new city council comes forward, and I do have confidence, that their, that same decorum that was carried through the campaign will be also carried forward in the new city council. So I will see you in January. I'm very glad to see all of you here, and looking forward to the new changes that are coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessaker?
No, ma'am.
All right, anyone else? All right, I would like to take a moment out to wish my most sincere, best wishes to Terry, Carolyn, and Brenda for their future endeavors. And I'd also like to wish all of Stanton happy holidays. As mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the December 8th, 2022 Stanton City Council regular meeting adjourned.